Call to order the full city council meeting for December 5th, 2023. Just for those at home, we're starting a little late because we had an executive session, and we gave a little time just to kind of catch up on that stuff. So with that, the clerk will call a roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
Maldonado Velas?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Here.
Puelo?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tallman?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for pudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoiok.
And the city council.
All right, so housekeeping, we pulled the name, Councilor Bacon. Your first.
Again.
Again, that's what happens, that's what happens. Also, because we have two people join us by Zoom, three actually, motion to take roll call votes for the purpose of this meeting would be that all motions to remove items from the table, place them on the table, open public hearing, package them, suspend the rules unless there's an objection.
So moved.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Finally, we do have the councillor elects that are in attendance, if they would like to come in and take a seat and join us, please come on in now. There's two seats open, councillor Anderson Burgos and councillor Jenny Rivera, those seats are open.
Councillor Bacon's available.
And councillor Bacon, three.
Is this seat open?
Okay. Turning it over to councillor Anderson Burgos.
Oh, I am so, oh, yes. Yeah, oh God, I wish I was there. So, I'd like to.
Suspend the rules, take up item 28 out of order.
Out of order, yes. God, I really wish I was there.
Second. Well, hold on, hold on, let's do the vote first. So to go out of order, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Order that proclamation be presented to David Bowden for superintendent of Outdoor Works, who will be retiring after 20 years of dedicated service to the city, councillor Anderson Burgos, that's the order?
It is.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Councillor Anderson Burgos, you're up.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to state for the record, I was near someone who has COVID, and just to keep everybody safe, I decided not to come in. Trust and believe, I really wanted to be there to present the citation in person to David Bowden. I can't thank you enough for your, the work that you have provided to the city of Hoiok. And, you know, I just didn't want you to retire without thanking you and expressing how happy and kind of sad we are that you're leaving. With that said, Mr. Bowden, if you'd like to address the city, please feel free to, this is your moment to shine. Again, we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all the work you've done for the city.
All right, so with that, let me read the proclamation that everyone voted for, and thank you councillor Bartley for walking Dave up. From the city council, be it resolved that the city council extends its congratulations to Dave for your dedicated service as superintendent of Outdoor Works for 20 years of service to DPW. On behalf of the full city council, thank you very much for everything you have done.
Thank you. When I started here 20-plus years ago, never knew where this trip was going to take me. But I want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to have served the city and the residents of this city. My family's been here for over 150 years, and we'd like to continue that tradition. Again, thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, we know you. Congratulations, I've seen you on the streets quite a bit. Good to see you.
Thanks again.
Great job.
Great job.
All right, so we'll go to items that were laid on the table. Item one.
Is there another agenda?
Do we need an agenda?
Motion to take item one off the table.
Second.
Motion is take item one off the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Committee on DJNR was referred to special permit application for 20 Pearl Street, we're just waiting for some information to come in that came in.
Yep.
So councillor Murphy Rumbaletti.
Yep, so just to recap again, the homeowners are in attendance this evening, this is related to creating a studio apartment in the basement of 20 Pearl Street, and we, the committee and the city council, we talked about it, we just wanted to make sure that they had submitted architectural plans that were actually stamped and stamped by an architect with the seal, the official seal, so that information was provided to us, thank you. I don't know if anyone has any questions or anything else to add.
Anyone? Councillor Bartley.
Yeah, I just want to appreciate the report, I just want to add that it was, I think it's going to be a real credit to the neighborhood, but what we were really looking for is to make sure that the petitioner was compliant with the ordinance, and we were confident that they would be, so we moved it along for the last meeting, but the petition did say they didn't think they could get the stamp drawing to us in time for the prior meeting, but they felt confident enough they would send it by today, and in fact, they did. And it looks great, and I'm just grateful that they're investing further in the city of Hoiok, thank you.
See no one further, the clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
If you vote you approve the special permit, congratulations. Councillor Jordane?
Just one quick, was there any conditions, or we already covered that? I just wanted to make sure.
Everything was covered in the prior meeting.
Just wanted to make sure.
I was just waiting for that last piece.
Perfect, thank you.
Item two.
Sir President?
Yes.
We, if I remember correctly, laid this on the table for the purpose of, referred it to the law department for the purpose of understanding how this could be done, and if it did need union ratification. I've not heard back from the law department, nothing formal.
Okay, so we'll keep going, public comment? We do have three signed up. The first one is someone I've never heard of before, Joshua Garcia, two Dunn F., so we'll turn it over to the mayor to start this.
Good evening, everybody, good evening councillors. So tonight, you're going to be taking up an order that will fund a comprehensive public safety plan known as the Ezekiel's Plan. The plan involves a combination of strategies that will help us advance our efforts to tackle various quality of life issues that I know the citizens of Hoiok want to see addressed. These strategies include proactive policing, more code enforcement, technical enhancements, interventions to address illegal activity, combat violence, and improve the health and safety disparities that have a negative impact on people's lives and the neighborhoods. We're talking about strengthening enforcement, enhancing surveillance, training for city staff, neighborhood outreach and engagement, and establishing a new division out of the mayor's office for community response to help residents with housing and neighborhood issues, and proactively address quality of life concerns. The goal is to ensure a safe and healthy atmosphere, restore confidence and pride through all of our neighborhoods, and cultivate a culture of accountability across the city. The public has made it very clear to me, particularly those that live in and around the downtown area, that is the city, we're not just doing enough to ensure their safety. This plan helps us respond to these concerns in a comprehensive way, and I'm looking forward to see this order passed tonight, so that we can continue to build a healthy city that I know Ezekiel would have grown up to love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patty Devine.
Hi, my name is Patty Devine, and I reside at 58 Magnolia Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to address the city council. Number one, my thanks to Jeffrey Anderson Burgos and many others who helped me become acclimated again to returning to the city council, so I especially want to thank Jeff because he's been very helpful. Number two, once I'm sworn in, I will be proposing the words "and all city employees" be added to Rule 6, Section E, which states that no member in debate shall make any reference to another member or members of the general public but in respectful terms, and to that I am adding "all city employees." Number three, under motions, orders, and resolutions on tonight's agenda, I would ask whoever is the chair of ordinance that he or she will take up all orders in a timely manner in the order that they were received. As to order number 26, to take away the powers of the people to elect their mayor is troubling, to say the least, and I look forward to addressing this in committee, thank you.
Thank you. Hold on. Public comment is next, is Howard Graney.
Ooh, decorum.
Whoa, whoa, whoa!
Whoa!
Mr. Graney, you are up here.
What is his problem?
It's good to see you.
Excuse me.
It's good to be seen, Mr. President.
Wait, before we start, we're going to redo this. Mr. Graney, it's good to see you, I hope all is well, it is your turn.
Thank you, sir. Well, once again, I want to congratulate all the people who ran for office and were elected, it's a hard road to accomplish this task, and I appreciate the voters of Hoiok who have shown their confidence in me to serve another term on the city council starting in January. I would also like to thank personally from many residents who I have spoken to, councillor Joe McGivern, councillor Peter Tallman, and councillor Todd McGee, for their numerous years of service to the city of Hoiok. We all know what a difficult job it is, and their expertise and their patience and their camaraderie will be greatly missed on this council, so thank you once again councillor McGivern, councillor McGee, and councillor Tallman for your dedication to the city. Next, I would like to voice my support for order number 19E, to go on to the ballot to reduce the taxes of the city from the Community Preservation Act. I think the taxpayers in Hoiok desperately need some discipline as far as our taxes are concerned, and I will be sponsoring a lot of legislation to cut taxes, especially for the residents and for the businesses in Hoiok, we're starting to drown, and that's not good for the city. And lastly, the 19, no, yes, 19B, there was a $45,000 donation from the city council for a new vehicle for the city council, I'm sorry, for the citizens, senior citizens, this is desperately needed, okay? I believe they're only driving on one car now, there are many residents who would like to get to this, who would like to get to the council on aging, but they're unable to do so, so I would appreciate that this council would move quickly on that issue to see if you could provide that transportation. Thank you very much for your indulgence, and have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on? So that would end public comment.
Mr. President?
Councillor Jordane?
Under rule suspensions, I believe we have an item relative to tax classification in the late files, is that right?
That we do, let me go to it. Late file A?
If it's.
Go out of order to.
Yeah, if we could go out of order for the purposes.
The motion is suspend the rules, take up late file A for discussion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's an adjoining item, excuse me, there's an adjoining item, item number 35, that would be part of the discussion.
All right, so take late file A and 35 as a package, all those in favor? All opposed? So A is from councillor McGee, councillor McGivern, we're at the city council vote to set the MRF for fiscal year '24 tax classification. 35 from councillor McGivern, that the city council subsidizes revenue for the sewer budget from the tax levy for fiscal year 2024 by $1,039,680. So those are now up for discussion, first was councillor Jordane.
Thank you. I don't know what the will of the body is at this point, I'm hearing all kinds of things such that we have to vote on miscellaneous things, and then we're going to have a special meeting maybe next week on tax classification. Why I'm bringing it up now is, we have concerned citizens who have been gracious enough to come down to watch and listen in on the tax classification vote. If that's not going to happen tonight, I don't want these poor people listening at home and sitting in the audience for hours until it's finally decided that we're not even going to take it up tonight, so if that's the deal, then I would like to just have these items tabled until whenever we're going to be taking them up, or if it is the intent that we're going to vote on tax classification tonight, which I highly doubt it because I asked the assessors for the most recent, up-to-date CIP shift and levy, tax recap forms that we need in order to have the opportunities, and I was told, we'll get them to you tomorrow, and that's today. So, so I don't even know if it's even available for us to vote on tax classification now tonight, and I'm just more concerned about citizens waiting for hours to have that found out, thank you.
On that last point, just for clarification, we still have to vote on the Ezekiel Plan, whether it's up or down, which then would help.
Correct the mundo, right.
So with that, they can't provide it because they're still waiting on us, so it's not like they didn't provide it too or something, but the point is, they're waiting on us, so how about we take A and 35, table it in order to then address your first point, which is not have people waiting. Councillor McGivern?
If I could just quickly address 35, so we have a, we're all on the same page, I was asked late last week to have this filed under my name, it would go under my name as chair of finance anyways, but this reflects what is the current projected deficit of the wastewater treatment plant, the enterprise fund itself, with accordance with the, what the rate is currently charging the users of the wastewater treatment plant. I asked why does it have to go onto the recap sheet this year, and I was told that it was DLS's, DLS's direction that we need to address this because of the discrepancy in what the rate, what the sewer rate is, and what the expenses in the budget are. I'm explaining what I've been told, I concur with councillor Jordane, if we're not going to vote on tax classification tonight, the two issues that remain, and I concur with the president, is coming out of finances Ezekiel's fan, Ezekiel's plan for a vote, that I'm sure we can one way or the other handle this evening. This is a little bit more in detail as to what the impact will be on the recap sheet. Either way, if we don't vote for this appropriation for the deficit, it still will have an impact on the recap sheet, which is another weight for the, what we've got to know for our final numbers for tax classification. We could vote on tax classification, but these numbers are big, we voted on tax classification in the past with minor changes that take place down the road, but this evening, these are two. If we also were to address the sewer rate, which is in the ordinance committee, and if we were to take a vote on a adjusted sewer rate, that would reduce the deficit obviously, and would also have an impact on the recapped. My understanding is the mayor's looking to call a special meeting on the 14th, I don't have a problem either way, the only question I have is our tax collector on board with that much of a weight, because once we take our final vote, bills have to be printed, and they must be out by the 31st, or we will get, we will have no money coming in the third quarter, and we'll be borrowing money to get through, as has happened in the past, to get through the third quarter. So that's, that's the issues that are before us as to far as making a decision of whether we go forward with tax class.
So on the last point, we were advised that up to the 14th would be what they need for time in order to get the bills out.
I, the only person that has not stated that, that I understand, is the tax collector.
When I was on the phone with the mayor, he was calling in to get that information, and that was the timeframe that we were told.
I just heard different.
Okay. Councillor Jordane?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points, and I think we should just table these items and move forward, but new information continues to come to light every day relative to the sewer deficit. One is that $389,000 deficit that we were told about for FY '23 has now gone, that an industrial payment, a large one came in afterwards, so that number no longer exists. Number two, it's also been brought to our attention that the street sweeping is now $600,000, perhaps more, once you count the total amount, I'm just putting a placeholder there for the labor portion, so that we know, and now if we go back and did this for four, five, 10 years, I mean, you're talking, to use paraphrase some of what other councillors have used, ratepayers are subsidizing taxpayers to the tune of perhaps $6 million over the last 10 years, so I think we need to look at that issue. People should take a good look, we're going to have a report coming out of finance tonight, which is going to get referred over, take a look at how big that number is. That also, also doesn't take into account two other factors that we're now aware of. The collections report has now come in, and the collections are not, are 10% off every single year at least for the last three fiscal years, that's $700,000 each of the last three years. Tax receipts are at 97%, sewer receipts are only at 90%. That delta is at least a half a million per year for three fiscal years in a row, need to consider that number, why aren't we collecting all the money, especially when we have tools? Is it better that everyone pays than those that pay pay more? So I think we have to start getting to, down to those type of things. So as we look at all of this, and then we had a couple one-time issues that were particular, I think it was about $700,000 in terms of some physical repairs that were one-time, not to advance a permanent sewer increase in that regard. So when we look at all of these things put together, I think you'll find out it speaks to not a need for the type of increase, or any increase, at all, and I think I'll leave it at that, but I, the good news is, it's my knowledge that, as I spoke to the auditor, the $63 million number already includes the sewer portion of it, the only thing that's the jump ball at the moment is the Ezekiel Plan, which I presume we're going to vote for momentarily, one way or the other.
Anyone further? So A and 35, the motion would be to.
Can we separate?
So take up A first, or what do you want?
A first, please.
So late file A is to table?
Table.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
35?
Motion to refer to committee on finance.
Motion to refer to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, on to communications. Three from the mayor.
President, can we just inform the public that MRF won't take, the tax won't take place?
Yep, so with regards to tax classification, it will not take place tonight, it's been tabled to be taken up, I think on the 14th.
Thank you.
I don't know yet, maybe six?
TBD.
What? Probably six. We'll let you know, we'll get you there. All right, three from the mayor appointing Mr. Paul Burns Johnson to serve as a member of the Board of Appeals.
Mr. President?
Yep.
As the chair of the Public Service Committee, if it's possible to vote this person in tonight, they're short, they have two members of this board, Board of Appeals, the last member we had had a conflict that we had tried to get on here, and then, because she was on two, going to be on two boards, so there's a, I believe, a meeting on the 15th, and we won't be meeting again till the 19th, so if nobody has a problem, I'm sure several of you know Mr. Burns, he's been very active, he's with the PVTA, and been on several boards in the community, if it's not a problem, the mayor suggested, and the chair of the Board of Appeals, Josh Knox, asked if this could be passed tonight.
I'll second that motion.
I was going to say I second it, but you got it.
Councillor Bartley?
Yeah, so I'll, normally I would never support this, but Mr. Knox did reach out, well, I don't know about all, but he reached out to me anyhow, and I had a back and forth with him a little bit, he explained the position. So Mr. Knox has been on the, on the, he's the chairman, he's been on that board for many, numerous years now, I'm going to say double-digit. We also had the pleasure of having Mr. Burns come here. Councillor Tallman and I worked with him very closely on a really important project in Ward III, and he came through, and he came here to support it, and so my experience with him has been nothing but great, so I'm, and I would anticipate we would, as we always do with most of our nominees, we would pass it anyhow. And also, to fill out the term, I think the term expires at some point next year?
Next year, yeah.
July 1, 2024.
2024.
Okay, so, I mean, and then the last point that the chairman pointed out was, there is a meeting, and they do need it next week, and we're not going to have a timely appointee, so while that's said, I would say we should suspend our rules and take a final vote tonight.
All right, so motion is to refer, councillor McGivern?
I don't have a problem with that, normally I would, I don't question the integrity of the candidate, and that's all is before us this evening in terms of the mayor's appointment. I do have some questions about, and I will save them or find a better way to ask them, but about the Board of Appeals being busy. The Board of Appeals is about variances, dimensional hardships over the codes and zonings of the city of Hoiok, and a property owner that has a problem, that is a hardship, and is caused by a dimensional control that they cannot move forward without the variance. I question how busy the Board of Appeals is, and I question where the minutes of their meetings. I haven't seen them or an agenda in a long time. So with that in mind, that doesn't take away from Mr. Burns Johnson, I, you know, I think he's a fine gentleman, and hopefully maybe he can go in with those questions and make sure everything's on the up and up. We've had the Board of Appeals, not the current one I'm stating, but in the past, try to do a lot more than what is their purview, and what is their responsibility.
Councillor Bartley?
Yeah, if there's a more esoteric board in city government than the Board of Appeals, I'd be hard-pressed to figure out what it is, I mean, that is a mystery wrapped in an enigma and surrounded by a puzzle, it's just one of those things where we don't hear much from, so I'd have to echo the finance chair's comments, it would be nice if, for all committees, and I think I've asked for this numerous times, to get our meeting minutes sent to us, their meeting minutes sent to us as often as they can, and I've noticed in my tenure that a lot of the boards are now doing just that, and they've been very conscientious about it. I only had the email from Mr. Knox that they do have a meeting on the 15th, and there is, there is some urgency, so I have that in writing. Beyond that, I certainly would ask him, and I'm pretty sure he's watching, and he'd be responsive to make sure that meeting agendas, meeting minutes are forwarded to us in a timely fashion, so, but I certainly heard what the finance chair said, it's, he's not wrong, thank you.
Councillor Murphy Rumbaletti?
Thank you, I was also contacted by the chair, and he did mention that they anticipate having to have more meetings more often than in the past, we're doing more, the city is doing more code enforcement, different levels of enforcement, so just wanted to add that to everything that was just said.
So with that, motion is to confirm the appointment, which will end July 1st, 2024.
The motion is suspend our rules and confirm the appointment.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Four is appointment of associate of the Board of Appeals, Mr. Fontanaz, this will expire July 1st, 2026, this is the first time, so.
More on the public service?
Yes, on the public service.
Yeah, I believe that if Jeffrey is this correct, we have a meeting tomorrow night, a public service meeting, and I believe he'll be in for that, is that correct, Jeffrey?
He's been invited, but he hasn't responded yet.
Oh, he's been invited, okay, so if he doesn't show up, we'll have it the next meeting, but we'll have him in to talk to him, and interview him.
Will we get a resume and all that?
Yeah, yeah, we should get that, yeah.
Councillor Bartley?
Okay, this is.
Thank you.
Yeah, is this, this is the same gentleman that ran at large, right, so?
Yes.
Oh, okay, this is great, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So to public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Five is the sewer budget report, and six, take them up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Six is the general fund report, motion be received those?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven is the MMC money cuts for the supplemental budget, motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight is from the Receiver Superintendent of Public Schools regarding Agenda Item One.
Mister President?
Yep.
That's gonna go with my committee report as well, that's part of the committee report. We, I don't know how you wanna go about it, but we can either table that, or bring it back up, whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, how about we come back to it, take up eight with eighteen C? We'll just come back to it. Nine, what?
You wanna do it now, or?
You wanna take them up together, you, you ready to do it? Wanna take up eighteen C and eight now?
No, we'll, we'll wait till the reports, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. So eight, we'll just come back to. Nine is Department of Environmental Protection, waterways license, Hoyok Rose. Motion be to receive that?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Have a copy of that, please.
And a copy to everyone. If it's missed, we'll get you a copy.
I, I checked, I don't have it.
You want mine?
Counselor Tomlin's giving his.
We'll share it.
Ten is from Parac. Motion receive?
Yep.
It's received.
Favor? All opposed? Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, suspend rules, take them up as a package?
I'm old.
I'm old.
In favor? All opposed? Eleven is redevelopment authority minutes. Twelve is redevelopment authority minutes. Thirteen as well, and then fourteen, historic district commission minutes, and fifteen as well, so historical commission minutes. Motion is to receive those, all those in favor?
Under discussion.
Yeah, Counselor McGivern first.
I'm assuming, but I'll ask anyways, to just make sure and confirm. These are coming in years later, so I'm assuming they were subject to some form of litigation, and these are executive session minutes being now released from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah, there's definitely executive session, Kev. One of them was.
Okay. Okay. Because the set in item twelve didn't mention executive session. But I'm assuming it must have been the litigation or whatever is over with. I don't know if anybody knows.
It, it could have been a real estate matter, I just, I don't remember what it was.
I'll, I'll look.
It was executive session, I'll find it.
That's fine.
All right, so those are to receive.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, petitions. First one is sixteen is a renewal of a home occupancy for seventy-nine Merrick Ave. It's the electrician business?
Motion to grant the petition pending all the stuff is paid.
Looking at the taxes, everything's current, so motion is to grant it. If there's any conditions that were there. Clerk will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the renewal.
So just to be clear, this is, because Kevin reminded us, this is granted and permitted and subject to any existing condition.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Oh, sorry, thank you, my bad.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Waldenada Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramalletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Tomlin?
Yes.
Twelve VAs unanimous vote.
Your vote, your, to the renewal. Seventeen is another renewal for two sixty-seventh Southampton Road. It's a plant-based, non-dairy business.
A motion to grant the renewal?
Second.
With conditions, taxes are current, so any comments? None, clerk will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the renewal.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Waldenada Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramalletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Tomlin?
Yes.
Twelve VAs unanimous vote.
Your vote, approve that. Uh, let's see, President's Report, Thursday, December seventh. The Hoyok Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Committee will host the Time Capsule Closing. That will be at three PM. Includes a lot of things going into there. Also, on the seventh is the Rotary Club Eat, Drink, and Be Hoyok, which is upstairs from five-thirty to eight-thirty. December ninth, the Eighth Annual Hoyok Community Dinner Celebration at Kelly School from four to seven. Let's see here, early in two thousand twenty-four, keep an eye out for release of the commemorative book for the Hundred and Fiftieth. December twenty-second is the City Hall, what do we call it? The Employee Party Recognition at Fame, that's at five PM. Last but not least, you'll see these lovely tins on your desk.
Yes.
I did check the price, it is under fifty dollars, you can, you can take it. And this is from Jeffrey.
Oh, thank you.
So, thank you very much for the cookies, but just wanna let you know where they came from. Counselor Rivera.
Uh, I, um, first let me thank Counselor Barney for reminding me. Uh, this past Saturday, myself and some fellow counselors attended the Charter School inauguration of their new basketball gym. It's a pretty cool facility, a pretty awesome event. They, they had a small court, well, a small because they have younger kids, but a chorus choir, they had a basketball team, volleyball team, and cheerleaders, everyone was out there and having fun. It was a pretty surreal event, because literally watching the space that used to be the flea market when I was a little kid, now is a gym, is pretty exciting, and, and, and you can literally feel the aura and the vibe within the building with the gym. Can't wait for the new gym at, probably, right, whenever they build that one too. Then as well, I would like to add that, you already mentioned the community dinner for December, December ninth. They're looking for volunteers, anyone is welcome to come by, eighth annual, feel free to come through, free meals, Carmen has attended several years, I think every year almost. So like, it's a pleasure to have counselors come in and enjoy a meal with the families that come in from the communities. And, yeah, thank you guys, that's actually my birthday too as well.
Oh.
How much information?
Good old thirty-seven. Wait, no, thirty-eight, oh wow. You lose track after thirty.
Well, first, happy birthday.
Next, Counselor Bartley.
Happy birthday. Uh, so I just wanna reiterate what the counselor said relative to the, to the gym. It was, I can't believe we have a brand, another brand-new gym in the city. So the last one built was at HCC, named after dad, and now we've got another one here in Ward Three. And Dr. Pope deserves a tremendous amount of credit for, you know, all four foot eleven of her, she is just a dynamo, and really impressive, and, and the Board of Trustees, and the students, and Tommy Paquin, who led the development team the whole time. It is a really good-looking facility, and I hope everybody has a chance to, to visit it and experience it, because I'm glad I did, thanks.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister President. Just a quick announcement, this weekend is a very special anniversary celebration at the Hoyok Merry Ground. The Hoyok Merry Ground first opened its doors in Heritage Park on December seventh of nineteen ninety-three, opened to the, on a soft opening, opened to the public on December eleventh, nineteen ninety-three. We're celebrating thirty years in Heritage Park. The, the machine, the carousel itself, his birthday was nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-nine he came to Hoyok for the first time, and it is pushing its hundredth year birthday itself. But for the celebration that, on Saturday and Sunday, Saturday very special, we're gonna have Elsa and the Spider-Man will be present. So anybody that has some children and would like to meet Spider-Man in person, please come down. The parade committee's gonna do some tartan gift sales, and we're going to welcome back, for the first time in over nine months, our lead horse, Lancelot, just had a restoration facelift at the New England Carousel Museum, their Restoration Department. That one horse in nineteen eighty-six was appraised at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We've got it back, it looks, he looks brand-new, and we'd be, we're gonna have a little raffle to see who wants to be the first person from the public to ride Lancelot. But please, everybody, Saturday, Sunday, Merry Ground, a lot, a lot to celebrate.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I, I wanna just echo what Counselor McGivern just said, because then it gives me a chance to mention John Hickey's name, because he called it the happiness machine, and without a doubt, he's, I, maybe most people aren't familiar with Mr. Hickey, but I, I know that some, several of us are, as the head of the Water Works, and just a rack on tour, and just really a great gentleman in the city of Hoyok, dentist in a well-see road, and really is an amazing individual. And what he saw was a real need, and he gathered a whole bunch of people, according to dad, and a bunch of, a lot of people in and around the area, and they bought that for, I, I wanna say eight hundred thousand, but I don't remember exactly what it was, all privately raised cash, paid the gentleman who was, who owned and operated Mountain Park, and he sold it at cost. I don't think he was looking to make a profit, he just, but he wanted to get his money back, and sure enough, they did it, and, and look at it now. So it's really iconic, you know, Joe's been there for all these years, keeping the legacy going. I know he doesn't really say much about his role, but it's important what he does and all the other volunteers do down there, so it's, it's really an iconic part of the city, and for everybody involved, you'd be very proud.
All right, with that, we're on to reports of committee. The first one is eighteen A, which is the Joint Committee of the City Council and School, to whom was referred DPW paying a crosswalk, the crosswalk at corner Jarvis and Ave, West Cherry Crossing, recommend that they refer to DPW to put in the crosswalk. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, so when this came up during the joint meeting, we were a bit confused, but then I remember the conversation we had at City Council that we, we just wanted feedback and have that conversation at the joint committee meeting, so, yeah, they just referred it back.
Okay, so it's been complied with and sent to DPW?
Correct, yes, yes, yes.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Um, I just, if, if not, when, I filed the order on behalf of the School Department. Jackie Gucci actually called me for a couple of families that live across the street from Sullivan School. There's one road coming out, not Dr. Frost, but the next one up, that does not have a crosswalk across Jarvis. The reason is, it's, it's hard to make it the handicap at the, the side of the, the street itself handicap accessible, because there's no sidewalk, and there are guardrails there. But there is room, I talked to Carl Rossi, he's gonna talk to the city engineer and see if they can make it work somehow, just so that, because there's nowhere to walk on that side for a sidewalk, for, for the children to walk to school. So if, if it hasn't been referred to DPW, if we could just make, make sure a copy got to them, and hopefully they'll be working on it soon.
All right, so how about the, one second, just so I get the motion. Motion be receive a DAP sent to DPW to put the crosswalk in. Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, I just wanted to say if, if Mr. McGivern could use that power for the crosswalk at Kelly School that we've been trying to get for like two years now? Just saying.
Think he can.
We'll take that up as well.
Mrs. McGivern used to work at Kelly School, I always would do that.
All right, so A, receive a DAP, send to DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B, from the Joint Committee to whom was referred, that the City Council work with the mayor and the school superintendent to address reinstatement of the bus services for Lyman Terrace. Recommend it's been complied with. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes, thank you, Mister President. So this also came along with the mayor's letter, which was read. Well, let me just go over my notes, it says here, mayor's proposal was written to the record. Proposal has two funding strategies, which included all schools, Ian White, Lawrence, McMahon, and STEM, all with similar circumstances as, as Kelly. Mayor did this to avoid a possible liability. Option one would cost one point, uh, option one, sorry, would cost four hundred thirty-seven thousand a year for all schools. Option two would cost a hundred and seventy-two thousand for winter months only for all schools. A total of six additional buses would be required. Mayor explained that no money from transportation was reallocated from the school budget hearing. So this is some of the notes that were mentioned during the meeting. Superintendent Soto stated that the transportation costs have increased significantly by seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four. Superintendent Soto also, with the help of the Hoyok Fire Department and the DPW, they walked the eleven-minute walk to ensure safeties, which include crosswalks repainted, crossing signals were properly working, et cetera. He also identified Kelly School staff, about six, who will initiate the walking bus route to ensure the safety of the children, walking bus route will be available through the winter months as well. And, you know, there was also some conversation about policy mileage threshold, and hazard, hazard zones were recalculated once the rezoning was set in place. Mileage threshold is more than one mile for K through five grades. Anyone, any of the city counselors who were on this order, if you would like to speak, go right ahead.
Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, sure, thank you, Mister President, and thank you for the report. I, I was, I was present at the meeting, I, I'm one of the people that kinda co-signed on the order, and I think the concern for me mostly was because the, the families in Lyman Terrace, they had a bus for a very long time, and it was just suddenly taken from them. And I think that the, the way it was communicated, for lack of better words, just wasn't communicated effectively, because they didn't really understand or comprehend that this was gonna happen for that, for that school year. So myself and some of the other counselors felt like, just to have the conversation, and try to like, see how we can solve the issue in, in filing in this, this order. But as, as Counselor Anderson Burgos presented, there, there are a variety of different monetary issues attached to, to providing the transportation, and, and in a sense, there's also issues around equitability for, for other possible riders throughout the city overall. So it seems like the mayor and, and the superintendent are trying to take a, a, a approach that is servicing residents that are pretty much lacking transportation with, with the walking school bus. I think today, at around one-thirty, they did the walk, a, 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 a trial walk with Dunhill School, to, to, to go over the safety and do a lot of, how do you say, the beginning stages of strategically planning to, to create that, that walking school bus for Dunhill School. And it looks like they're gonna try to do this throughout the, the district, so that way, kids that are walking to school, that they're making sure that they're getting to school safe. It's a good plan, in a sense, but for me, preferably, I would prefer you just give everybody buses, because I rode buses as a kid, and, and I totally gained a valuable experience as a kid riding the bus from the flats to McMahon, right? That's not today, but just wanted to report out on what I got from the meeting too as well. And thank you again, Mister Burgos.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mister President. I wasn't on this order, but I did watch the meeting, and one of the things I, I took away from it was that the Lyman, it sounded to me like the, the bus that was provided to Lyman was because of the construction and the danger for students to walk because of that construction. And the route was not safe because of, you know, streets undergoing construction and the bridge, so. It sounds to me like we just took a really long time to finish that project, and by the time the project was over, and the buses were no longer being used, it seems like no one remembered that the school was still within a mile, and that the students would otherwise have had to walk, so. I'm definitely in favor of the walking school bus, if we can get it going. And it looks like they have it. I did visit Kelly at the beginning of the school year, and it seemed like the walking school bus was working at the time, according to the, the teachers in the morning, so I can only hope that it continues to work, thanks.
See, no one further, just for procedure, Counselor Anderson Burgos, sign your name to the items?
If you don't mind, thank you.
All right, so this is that it's complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're on to C, we're gonna take up, suspend the rules, take up eighteen C and eight as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighteen C, Command, Joint Committee, who was referred in order that the Joint Committee of School and City Council invite in the receiver to discuss financial literacy for the school. And then eight is from the superintendent regarding the program. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, Mister President. Let me look over my notes here, so here's what the notes say. The financial literacy course is currently offered and includes the following, which is earning, debiting, saving, budgeting, purchasing, including loans, insurances, investments, just to name a few. just to name a few. We see the attached letter that Superintendent Soto has sent. I believe everyone should have a copy of that. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. So the course is currently offered at the north campus and due to the staffing market, it's a five, but not at the other, not at the other campus. And that's due to staff, the staffing market. It is a five-credit course. Twenty students are currently enrolled in it. Elected year-long course. Students at Dean Campus do, although although it's not really offered there, but they do have access during their freshman and sophomore courses. It's offered. And President McGee, if you'd like to, or if you have any questions or whatever, or any comments you'd like to make, now's the time.
Now, this is what we're looking for. This is sufficient.
Yeah, he did mention, I know that the 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 letter states September, but if you guys recall, the the joint committee meeting, there was some kind of mishap and it didn't happen. That's why the letter is dated September and not November. And that's it.
Okay.
So I'd like...
Hold on. Counselor Jordan's next.
Yeah, just, thank you. Nice report. Appreciate that. I just wanted to speak strongly in favor of the school department doing this. I think this is an important elective class for the for the students. It's it's just phenomenal that they are proactive to do that. In fact, I would argue, these type of classes, when you look back at your high school experience, or for that matter, your college experience, you sometimes wonder, will I ever use this information at any point in my life in the future, you know? And while there's certainly, I believe in a liberal arts education and it's really important for us to be holistic thinkers and, you know, I strongly support that model of education, especially at the collegiate level. I will say, some of the best experience and and things that are most impactful for your life, you certainly either get it in these type of courses, or if you have to go at the graduate level to take certain types of of things. And these financial literacy courses is so critical for students to see how you can break out of cycles of poverty, how saving and getting that snowball rolling downhill to make yourself for your retirement, for your future, and just that little bit of savings that you keep going. Someday when you turn sixty-five, you could be a multimillionaire. And staying out of debt and all these other types of principles that they educate children about, understanding about checking accounts and mortgages and all the things that we as adults often take for granted and and having this type of information for for students, they can be way ahead of the game on their life and and understanding the impact of, what does it really mean to have a school loan and what is the return on that to me? And all these type of things, it's great that we're having those conversations to make these, to make children really have a holistic education about the whole financial realm and personal finance of their life. I think it's phenomenal. And I'm really glad that Superintendent Soto values this. And I know the principal McKenna does. And I'm glad that they have no problem with having the, you know, quite a number of students sign up for the program. And I think that's very valuable education. I'm glad that they're doing it. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor Revere?
Yeah, I would like to also add, aside from the school department, because I do echo the sentiment of the value of the program, I feel like, and I could be wrong, but I know youth work, I mean, Mass Hire has a program called Youth Works where they put the kids to work from the ages of like thirteen to about twenty-two. They go through a smaller scale of that. Again, in the school, it's good to have it, but I think it's also good to also echo that throughout to the nonprofits that are have, that are working with the youth and maybe finding a way to try to expand on some of that too. So if the schools can't do it, maybe we can help some of the nonprofits do some of that stuff too as well.
So this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Yeah, I wanted to quickly mention, yeah, the the two councilors that just spoke make very, very good points. And I, you know, I I don't recall ever having these types of classes when I was in school. But I will say, when I worked for a financial institution, I went to a, an academy in Springfield and I was training their students on how to bank. And it included all of these things that I just mentioned in my report. And I'm glad that we're seeing this here now in Holyoke. As a matter of fact, I believe, if I remember correctly, Superintendent Soto said that the Holyoke Public Schools has been doing it for quite some time. And I'm very happy and proud about that. And yes, so this order would be considered complied with. Thank you.
All right. And with regards to this course, we have to thank Mr. Scott Topier, who's the one that worked on bringing it here. So...
Another smart guy.
Another very smart guy. Thank you, Mr. Topier, for doing this for the kids. But with that, it's complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are at...
Motion to adopt the committee report. Is that...
No, I, that was complied with. So now we're on to, it looks like ordinance, eighteen D. All right.
Yes.
So committee on ordinance was referred in order to review the ordinance for the Soldiers' Memorial Commission. Be done in updated language. Recommend it be adopted. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
All right, motion to give, adopt, pass, first reading, under discussion. And Counselor Bacon, sign your name to these?
Yes, thank you, please.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. So this order was put forth by Counselor Tomlin and I joined with him in order to update the membership of our Soldiers' Memorial Commission so that people will be able to be qualified because it was so specific in nature that given the age of our World War II veterans, we would have been lacking membership. And so initially we were advised this was to be a home rule petition. Most recently, it was clarified it could be done through ordinance. So as a, as a parting gift to Counselor Tomlin, we did our due diligence to move this to council tonight before he departed.
I'm not going to yet, so...
I know, I know, but we wanted to get under the wire.
I appreciate that. Mr. President, Chair, thank you, Counselor Bacon, for the kind words and for working on this. And Jeffrey for putting this forward. It took a little while, you know, this was brought before me through Jesus because in the ordinance it stated that you had to be, you know, World War II veteran. And of course, many of those are passing away. So this just changed so you you can still be that, but be a member of the the service and the branch and a World War II veteran, but not mandatory. And they are short. I talked to one of the commissioners today at CVS and they're looking forward to fill the role. And hopefully the mayor's listening and we'll get a couple more members at that that commission to to get this moving along. So thank you very much, Counselor Bacon.
So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. And motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call, roll for vote, yes, you're voting for the updated language.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Waldenada Vilas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We vote you approve that one. Eighteen E, command, ordinance was referred in order that ordinance two dash four two one be amended and include all public hearings so that the public has the opportunity to truly participate. Recommend it be adopted. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading?
Motion to receive, adopt, pass, the first reading?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this order came to committee from Counselors Jordan and myself. And we went back and forth over the language, which you have in legal form before you. It is my understanding it's not signed because the city solicitor did not agree to it as to legal form citing a legal opinion from the retirement board that they should not need to comply with this rule. So the committee, however, is recommending it to council on a five-zero vote that we should adopt it to be considered, to be consistent and to be more available to the public. There was also language added in there at the suggestion of a committee member and certainly any member add anything I might have left out to allow email correspondence if people couldn't be available for the public hearing. So it is coming forth to you for your approval from the committee tonight. Thank you.
Just one issue, and I was asking, Jeffrey, there is no legal form. There was nothing. I have nothing.
So...
Jeff, we circulated around the the one that we had.
I heard a meeting, but the legal law department never sent it.
Well, they're not going to. They, under the rules, they don't have to sign it. So they just sent it. Yeah, it's the, it's the one that was there.
It was circulated to everybody, but...
Correct.
I don't have a copy of. So hold on, Counselor Bacon, Counselor McGivern?
Under the rules, if the law department is not going to put it into legal form, it has to be referred to, submitted to the city clerk's office, typed into legal form and distributed to us in the same fashion we get the legal form prior to a meeting. I don't have it though. For for this particular one.
There were five that needed legal form. We only got four.
Yeah, this one has nothing to it. I'm just saying that I don't have anything.
No, this is different. The law department didn't do it. So it has to go to the city clerk to be done. And then we have a minority report or a report that states what Counselor Bacon's saying.
Counselor Jordan?
So the legal form was circulated. They did not do it, but we got it done. And the only, just the bone of contention, just so we're being completely transparent, was relative to, in the current ordinance, the retirement board is subject to the public meeting rule of after five o'clock. That's the current ordinance. That's been the ordinance for ten years. They haven't been following it. They believe that they're exempt from the ordinance. That's the essentially the issue. And as a result, they haven't been complying. The law department wanted us to take out the retirement board. We did not want to take out the retirement board. We should figure it out at some point date in the future, but that was the issue in a nutshell with it, was that our view was better to have them not complying than to give them an exemption. And we figure out how it is we can work on getting them to be compliant because it's such a big department and so important. And then the question is, why are they having their meetings at nine o'clock in the morning and not after five when it's available to citizens like all the other boards and commissions? So, you know, again, high praise for the retirement board. I can't say enough positive about the members of that board. They're great people. They do great work. We just have, they have not complied with this. The law department put it in with Caracunha. It's been in, it is current law currently. We just did not want to take it out. The law department wanted us to take it out. We didn't. And therefore, they didn't approve the legal form. That's the only issue. So in that regard, the rest of it is extremely non-controversial in my opinion. So that Jeff had, we we went over the legal form, the language at the ordinance committee meeting last week. So I don't know if we need to print it out or the the chairman has it, but it's very straightforward. That's the only issue, Counselor McGivern, just so you're aware of the the background story.
All right, so next is Counselor Revere?
So as much as I I agree, right, with regards to like having it in the evening and the meetings and everything, I spoke to one of the members on on the retirement board. And what they kind of like elaborated to me is that like, the board is like a part of the city, but it is also instituted by state statute, right? And that because of that, it it kind of muddies the waters, it sounds like, right? I I get where Counselor Jordan comes from with regards to this because for me, not many people are going to be able to make that nine o'clock in the morning meeting. The only thing for me though, I think, is if they actually, I'm not sure if they do, but if they recorded the meetings, if it was like live to record, then it can actually be, there's access to the meeting, right, for someone to to play it back later on. Now, will someone be able to do public comment and all the other stuff? Possibly not. And that's a different concept. I agree to a certain extent, but there it sounds like there's some red tape that's kind of preventing some of it. But I'm, wherever the the committee wants to move with that one.
Counselor Bacon and Counselor Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I I just want to raise a point of order in this regard. At the ordinance committee, as Counselor Jordan has stated, we had the legal form not signed by the law department. And in the meeting, I referred to Rule nine H and asked the law department to look at nine H because that is what applies if they don't agree with the committee. And so that was addressed. It was understood that the committee had not requested that change to the legal form. And so it appears the step that we now need to wait for is for that legal form to be submitted to the clerk, as Counselor McGivern stated, so that she can return it to the council in the legal form. So I'd like to offer a motion to table this, to get it back in legal form from the clerk.
Do we have it? Is it that material? I mean, could we suspend that rule? If it's, I mean, if we're, are we just waiting two weeks for the purpose of of having it come?
So what the rule says is that the draft shall thereupon be filed with the city clerk, which shall cause the same to be printed in copies showing thereon the disapproval of the city solicitor, sent to the mayor, solicitor, and each member of the council in the same manner as for ordinances that are approved by the city solicitor.
Right, understood. But I'm saying, it, this only came up because we were making other change. The retirement board wasn't, by the way, was not the subject of even the change at all.
Correct. We didn't see any change.
We were making other, correct. We were making other changes which were not controversial. And they just, while we were doing that, they wanted us to fix this old issue that has been out there for ten years, which we did not want to make that change. That was the discussion we had as committee members. And I think we were all united in the view that we were going to keep it as is, make these other changes. I mean, we could approve that. I mean, again, this is on the books for ten years about retirement board. They've been just not following it and people are just living their lives. As far as all the other good suggestions, I've suggested that videotape the meetings, do other things. Maybe then, you know, if there's other accommodations made, maybe we file a thing in the future to give some exemption or something. If there's good cause, there should be good cause to do that. But it's sort of bringing up an old issue when we're trying to make these other changes relative to public meetings and...
Yes, and it is coming to the council, the five-zero vote out of committee after much discussion. Thank you.
You want to table it to the next meeting?
My, my preference would be to, if there's really no objection from anyone about this material issue, I would prefer to just suspend that rule and take up and do the vote now and we move forward. I don't, otherwise, it's just going to wait two weeks and we're going to do the same thing in two weeks.
I'll second the motion to suspend the rule.
Unless, I mean, if there's, if there's, you know, people have strong opinions, I don't, I'm not wedded to it, but I just, if there's a good reason to table it.
Thank you, Mr. President. My comment or question comes more, it's more of a question because I think this is the first time in, at least in my term, where we tried to do an ordinance change to Counsel Jordan and every other member of the committee's point. All the changes that were brought to us from the solicitor's office were not the changes that we were asking for to that, when at that point, Counselor Jordan, you know, drafted the language, which is what we're going to be voting on tonight. But my question is, comes from the fact that it wasn't approved by solicitor's office. So I'm just, and this is the first time I've seen it. So I'm just really interested to know, like, what does that mean? What is the process of that? Like, if the solicitor's office decides, hey, no, this is not something we can approve, then how do we go about doing it? Because this is the first time I've seen it. So that is my question.
It, it's rare, but it does happen from time to time. And what happens is just what will happen here is we will vote on a legal form that's not approved by the law department. They want the retirement board clause removed, and we would pass it. But my point is, it's not like we're trying to add the retirement board. This has already been the law for 10 years, so we're keeping status quo as to their concern and objection. We want to file a separate order to have a discussion about retirement board and move forward. I, I would like to see these other changes made. You know, maybe we have the retirement board in, we file a separate order relative to retirement board, have them in. What other accommodations are you making? Why, why should we remove this? You know, I think that could be a separate discussion.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification. That's just, you know, I think we are all on the same page, at least from my understanding about what was written that day, you know, talking about trying to have committee meetings during times where people can actually attend them. I think to Councilor Rivera's point, as far as like videos and public comment, like, it includes the email, so there is way for people to submit comment if they aren't able to attend the meetings. So I think the ordinance that we created was good, but that was just my question, you know, if the solicitor's office doesn't agree, like, what is, where does that leave us? So, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I know how I'm voting as far as the issue of the retirement board goes. 10 years ago, I voted in favor of what I think is a good ordinance and understood it, although we didn't have a lot of discussion about the retirement board when we adopted the, the original ordinance. My concerns are, and I, I apologize, I couldn't stay for this part of the ordinance committee meeting, is I'm not really familiar with what these changes are, and I have not been mailed a copy of the ordinance 48 hours in advance to read what I'm voting on this evening, therefore, I object to acting on it this evening.
Okay. You know, I, I will say, it's disappointing that this ordinance, because technically, I have to tip my hat, and he's right. But why isn't this being circulated? It like sabotages this item from coming up for tonight's discussion, when all the other ones go through. This is, well, we've had this in committee for six months, and technically, Joe is right. And what, I mean, so now, on a procedural thing, this has to be delayed two weeks for something that's basically not really controversial. But, fair enough, I withdraw my motion to have that rule suspended, because I'd be a hypocrite if I, if I didn't agree with him, if he really sincerely objects, because we're supposed to have the legal form. But, on the other hand, why don't we have the legal form? Even without the signature? That shouldn't happened.
I can't hear who's speaking.
It's my, Councilor Bacon here.
All right. So, all right, so an accident happened. All right, that's fine, we move on. We're all human.
Councilor Bacon?
We're good. It's, motion to table.
Motion is to table. Is there a second? Is there a debateable? All those in favor?
All right.
Mr. President, we can't hear you.
Is your mic on?
There we go, yeah. Motion was to table, it was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Can I, can I just clarify that we're tabling it for the purpose of the law department to be able to comply with Rule 9H?
Right, we're going, we're trying to.
Okay.
Get the legal form, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's Rule 37, and it needs to go to the city clerk.
Right, but that's what we're trying, we're trying to get the legal form to us in the time of time.
It's articulated under 9H.
It should be.
Thank you.
Right, okay.
All right, so I did get a, a request from the mayor to see if we could go out of order to.
Comply with open meeting law, Mr. President?
What was that?
Does your request from the mayor comply with open meeting law?
No.
I don't think it does, does it?
Can I, can I just look?
Well, I mean, after the point of order, how do you, how do you get a request from the mayor, and now we're going, going out of order? How does that happen?
I'll get to it if, if I can.
Well, I mean, how, how do you communicate? I mean, it was, we're in open forum, aren't we?
I, I'll, I'll fully tell you. I got a text saying that.
Well, I mean, you, you can't text during, I mean, it violates open meeting law, Mr. President.
I'm just letting you know.
Oh, and I'm just letting you know. So I don't think, I don't think you can bring it up.
Once again, all right, then I'll do it my way. Is there a motion to go out of order for Item 19E? If not, we won't.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Way to go, Juan.
All right, so 19E.
You want some?
I would like to add to that motion.
All right, so wait, hold on. So motion is to go out of order to 19E, Councilor here, you want?
Wait, 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 wait. 19E is not on the agenda.
Yeah, you're talking about 19I.
I apologize, but I told the president before the meeting, there were two items, we had to meet yesterday because the chairman of Public Safety stole my Wednesday last week.
No, 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 no. I've been having that.
And we have two items that are waiting disposition, we, we tabled them in committee for reasons that the committee discussed, and you can check the minutes, but 19E is one of them.
Great.
Yeah, I'm talking about 19I.
H?
But go ahead.
H?
I would assume you mean I, right?
That's what I'm talking about.
I, yeah, it looks like I. Okay, so I was reading it wrong.
So, would I, if, 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 point of order or whatever, right, if I could promote, I mean, also package that with 20A, B, D, F, and H?
Say that again, though.
If we could package it with, with 20A, B, D, F, and H from Public Safety, because a lot of that coincides with the same project.
All right.
With 19I.
So 19I.
In 19I, in finance, you talked about the money, but in public safety, you talked about the systems.
So A, B, C, D, E?
A, B, D, F, and H.
A, B, D, F, and H. So motion would be suspend rules to take up 19I with 20A, B, D, F, H. You get that correct?
Thank you, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh.
So, 19I is Committee on Finance, $1 million from the tax levy to Special Article, the Ezekiel Plan. Get back in order on the other ones. 20A is Committee on Public Safety, or that the mayor come before the committee for the proposal of the plan, and that's complied with. B, Public Safety, that an RFP be created to study a community response model type program of police department but work in collaboration with several contributing partners, that's complied with. D, Public Safety, was referred in order to employees at the Hoyoke Police Community Center, come to Public Safety, meaning offer up working at importance to community and be aware, that's complied with. F is Public Safety, was referred, that the City of Hoyoke, former working group focused on development of solutions, ongoing issues for vagrancy on High Street, how many more buses, shelters to get removed, that's complied with. And H is Public Safety, that the mayor create a community safety department suggesting $500,004 for that, and that was sent to the mayor, that's complied with. So with all that, the first one would be 19I, which is the million dollar transfer, Councilor McGivern. If I got it all correct.
Thank you, Mr. President. 19I is the financial aspects of Ezekiel's Plan. I have no problem making the committee report, but does it make more sense to go through with the public safety report first?
We can, I was going with you first in order, if you want.
No, I understand, but we, and we did recognize the Public Safety's work and Finance Committee. I was unable to attend the Public Safety Committee, Oliver, after spending 11 hours at Bay State Medical with a family member, I did listen to the end of the meeting, and I do understand the mayor made a quite, quite an eloquent and quite a detailed presentation on his plan to the committee. So it might make sense to listen to the chair's report first.
So with that, to Public Safety, Councilor Rivera on 20A, B, D, F, and H.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair of the Finance, Mr. McGivern. So, in design, so technically, I already had a lot of this agenda kind of laid out before Ezekiel's Plan came forward. So it only made sense to add Ezekiel's Plan alongside with a lot of the requests that have been made over the last two years with regards to public safety within the community. So, just to go over 20B, I would say, we, I think it was Councilor Maldonado Velez that had fired, and myself, for an RFP for, to create a study for community responder model. The mayor touched on that, where he's thinking of creating, or in the plan, he's hoping to create a division of community response. It's not the same as community responder model, but it, the idea is to eventually get to the point where you start building out the model, but you need, at least according to the mayor, he would like to have someone in the position first, to, or, like, to be able to help build out the overall group, which kind of coincides with putting together a, a group of people to help mitigate the vagrancy, which is, real quick, 20D, I believe? No, E. So, bringing people together to come, to, to, to form a committee to help mitigate and deal with the, the vagrancy issues and the homelessness on High Streets and on Main Streets and throughout the city overall. So, with the community responder division, it sounds like they're going to come in and build out a division that hopefully in the future will help mitigate some of these issues with the homeless liaison or the homeless navigator and some of the opioid monies. So, that addresses some of the initiatives that he's trying to put forth with regards to Ezekiel's Plan. He, I also put together with it the, the request that we had put in a while back for the $500,000 to be funded in the public safety item, and I, and it made sense to add it in too as well, because public safety was funded at a million, as we just saw. So, it's great that it's funded at a million, I would love to support that. And, and, and a lot of the initiatives that are put forth, I agree with, there are some that I have issues with, but ultimately, so far, the plan sounds like some, some pieces of it have been well thought out, and there are others that they're working on and trying to fine tune as we go, because it's a, I think the words are, it's a moving target from time to time, and it's, so it's hard to like put a pinpoint, certain numbers on, on, on certain positions and certain areas when we, when we, when we try to build out certain systems. Then, the other one that I filed with regards to the work that's being done on Ray Street, we weren't able to get to that, the chief wasn't able to touch on that, but the mayor was able to touch on some of what the plans are with, in collaboration with the people on Ray Street, or the, what, what they do on Ray Street with Ezekiel's Plan, to make sure that the work that they're doing with the substance abuse and trying to get people off the streets is somewhat expanded and moved on. Yes, sir, that's what I'm talking about. It's somewhat expanded, and, and within the expansion is making sure that all, all departments that are working with the same population or the same demographic are on the same page and making sure that they're striving towards the same goal. So, the plan overall, I would say, the mayor, when he came in, he came in with the chief, came in with the Board of Health, and I'm not sure if there was someone, I don't think there was someone else, I think it was them, the chief and Board of Health, then they came in and they explained, and the auditor, but that was for finance, anyways, I'm confusing the meeting. The, the law department, that's who came in, Lisa Ball came in that day. So, overall, the idea is because they, they were presenting different pieces of where the money will be spent. Law Department is getting more funding for help with city solic, with the work in the law department office. The Board of Health is getting some funding with regards to the housing navigator position and this possible community responder division that will probably work in collaboration with the Board of Health and the Police Department. And the sheriff came, I mean, not the sheriff, the sheriff did come in, but not for this. The Police Department and the Chief of Police came in pretty much to break down where and how the, the allocation of funding for the Operation Safe Streets will take place. They did a pretty good job presenting, they were, again, there were some questions in this meeting, as well as there were in finance, with regards to how things will be financed and structured. We didn't get too much into finance, because that wasn't our topic. Our topic was talking about systems and how you're putting things together, and making sure that what we're, what he's asking for is, is literally going to be funded in a way where it makes sense for the city overall, and it's going to promote more public safety. With that being said, I'll defer the rest to Councilor McGivern, so they could touch on the finance piece. Thank you for your time.
Councilor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilor Rivera, and then the Public Safety Committee for a detailed discussion on a very important plan. The Finance Committee is referred just back to the full city council for consideration without a recommendation, but for the purpose of discussion, I would make the motion that passes the first reading.
I'll second that.
Motion is received, passed the first reading, under discussion.
Just a, a quick recap and reminder, we originally in Finance took this up when the supplemental budget was referred to us for, for a hearing. We conducted a supplemental budget hearing similar to the regular budget hearings that are conducted by the full city council, and referred that back to the, back to the full city council at the prior meeting. The full city council, you know, heard the public, public, I'm sorry, the Finance Committees' report that evening as to concerns about the cost of Ezekiel's Plan, that being that the original plan, there were 13 new patrol officers were going to be hired, as Councilor Rivera mentioned, a code enforcement, a health board code enforcer, and the criminal analyst, crime analyst position for the, for the police department itself. The crime analysis is taken out of the picture because it needs an ordinance, I believe that's going to ordinance or is in the ordinance committee for further discussion. The Board of Health, we did hear from the mayor, we did hear from our Board of Health Director, Sean Gonzalez, and we also heard from Chief Pratt about the details of all of the Ezekiel's Plan and the financing of it. Most important, we started tonight's discussion talking to the auditor and the mayor about exactly what we're doing fundamentally and procedural wise. When it was in the supplemental budget, and even now as a transfer, which is a transfer from the, looking on the tax levy and appropriation into what is known as a special article, Ezekiel's Plan. The auditor explained a special article, or in some, some cases, we call this a special revenue fund, which is similar to grant monies that we receive on a rare, a pretty much routine basis in all of our departments, but especially in the larger departments. The grant monies, or in this case, the ARPA monies that would be used, would be used to be part of the, the city budget itself, and therefore, the adjustment to the, to the tax levy, its, tax levy itself is part of what we're being asked to do. And to do it, we would also heard from the auditor that the way she would approach this is that any cost, if Ezekiel's Plan goes forward, any cost or any dollars spent from this $1 million or whatever is approved, if anything, she would charge to the line item, just the way, the similar way that she would charge a grant charge itself. So all expenses, not just salary, would be charged to the, to the line item known as Ezekiel's Plan. The line item, as proposed in the supplemental budget and as proposed before the Finance Committee, before the city council tonight, would be found in the public safety budget itself. It, it was noted, and the auditor did say she could break it down, but it would be harder to track it if she broke it down to individual line items, for example, salaries of police officers, salaries of the health board inspector, salaries, and or, and or other expenses. So she, she explained to us, she thought for transparency and for accountability, that the one line item made a little bit more sense. So we, we went on to discuss what is the new vision of Ezekiel's Plan as to opposed to when the Finance Committee and then the supplemental budget was, supplemental budget was separated by the mayor prior to our last meeting, and we voted on the supplemental budget without Ezekiel's Plan. And we heard Chief Pratt, who is a big part of the author of Ezekiel's Plan, and we heard in terms of additional police officers for the next six, seven months, it would be five additional police officers as opposed to the 13. This would show us savings both in the salary of, of 13, five, you know, eight. This would show us savings both in the salary of 13, five, you know, eight less, and also would show in the savings he believes he's estimating would save $250,000 in overtime expenses. We talked about the plan itself. We, I can't speak for everybody, but I say that after the supplemental budget came out, Ezekiel Plan itself is good law enforcement sense. It's well thought out, it's geared towards the safety of things that should be happening in our Police Department, but should be happening across all our neighborhoods and it should be something that takes place on a regular basis. The mayor, I think, has spoken on this on numerous occasions and his, you know, the passion he speaks with this is not just from the incident on, at Sergeant in Maple Streets, but from what he sees as deficiencies in both the Police Department and deficiencies in the Health Department and the Building Department in terms of enforcement. We know because we've been seeing this throughout the last half a dozen years that there's been a lot of vacancies in these departments, both in the Health Department, this particular position was unfunded, but it's been hard to fill a lot of the positions. The Building Department had a difficult time and the Police Department is only recently starting to come up to what is budget in terms of what patrol officers we need. So it does have an impact on enforcement. The mayor is proposing that we use this special act, this special funded money through ARPA for a boost to be able to put monies into these departments. I have my own personal opinion, but I wanted to make the committee report first and I certainly will come back later, Mr. President. We'll be happy to answer any questions, but it's here for the City Council's purview if they wish to go forward. We only can vote on the $1 million because we cannot amend an appropriation and it is in the form of an appropriation transfer.
Correct. Anyone questions or? So the motion is to pass, oh, Councilor Rivera?
This is discussion just for the sake of procedure?
Yeah.
All right, so like, so I guess for me, under reporting out, I didn't want to put my own personal opinion on things because it's a report, right? So now in the discussion, I mean, like I mentioned before at other meetings, I'm in agreement with a variety of the things that are being presented, initiatives that are being presented. There are some that I still have questions about and a lot of them pertain to the actual police piece of it. I know that some of this is needed and the support is needed. They do need more officers so that way they could cut back on overtime and their saleless funding. I think the issue for me is that I still haven't seen a plan as to how they're going to do that. They're asking us to just give them the money to then develop the plan after the fact. To me, that kind of worries me with regards to police because there's been a variety of occasions, as we know, that there's times where they utilize their power in ways where it's not beneficial to the community and then we have to pay for it in the long run. So to me, if there was a plan as to how they're going to get to the 95 officers, officers put forth, because I don't see that still, how they're going to manage things later on in the future and mitigate some of the issues that they have. But again, I wish it wasn't just that we could just vote on the million dollars. I wish there was pieces that we could vote on because there's a lot that I like about it and it literally has me like torn because I don't know where to go with this. Because there are some very, very valuable pieces to this, but there are others that to me still need to be kind of like drawn out and mapped out, but just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
So to answer one of your questions, so what is before us is just the million? We can't say, well, we'll approve only 700,000. So what could happen is you vote against this and they come back with more breakdown of kind of what you're looking for. That's what they'd have to do. Councilor Jordan, you're next.
That's absolutely correct. I totally agree with the last two speakers. I have a lot of the same reservations that Councilor Rivera has. Let me, let me just add on a few others. First of all, I just want to say the sincerity of the proposal coming forward, I think, is wonderful. I think it's warm. I think it's wanting us to be responsive. I will say honestly though, down deep, I do not see this spending plan is going to change the criminal conduct of these type of criminal shooters up on Maple Street that did this. Unfortunately, our budget changing is not going to change the hearts of those type of, of that type of criminal intent. Unfortunately, it's, we've got, we've got a long way to go to make changes in our society that will help people come to different conclusions about not just whipping out a gun to solve their problems. And we see that just the disgusting tragedy that comes from all of the needless violence for no reason. I want to just say though that I have lots of concerns about this, you know, in our lust to do the right thing, we don't want to do the wrong thing as far as our housekeeping here. Number one is this is simply something we cannot afford on a whole bunch of levels. One, we already have a $2 to $3 million structural budget deficit. If we were to approve this tonight, dollar for dollar, this is going to get added to the tax levy. I figured it out, if we kept the same shift as last year, it's about $107 per residential family with the average home. If your home is worth more, you'll pay more. That's every single resident, on top of the massive, you know, big tax increase you're about to get. We have currently a $60 million tax levy for fiscal year '23. If we don't approve this, the levy is going to be $63 million. If we do approve this, it's going to be $64 million. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I have never seen a levy increase in a year, $3 and $4 million in a year. We've never been anywhere near that, as best as I could tell. So to have that kind of an increase is just not sustainable. The other thing is we've got all kinds of empty positions. We increased by three more positions this past year in the police patrolman line. Those jobs are not filled. There's at least four positions that I'm aware of that are not filled. Let's get those filled before we talk about creating five more. And realistically, are we going to get nine positions filled and through the academy in the next six months? Is that really going to happen? No. We all know that's not going to happen and yet we're just going to hand the Police Department all of this money that we just can't afford. And quite frankly, when we have to know where we're at for fiscal year '25, is this plan sustainable? If we're going to do a plan, it's got to be more than a six month, a six month plan. It's got to be a real plan, one that's sustainable, that we're going to commit if we're going to add these officers and add all of this extra overtime, that it's something that we actually can afford. Now, the good news is we already funded the whole thing about the surveillance cameras. We were able to take that. I supported the mayor's proposal on adding that 256,000 and this council correctly adopted that some weeks ago. With respect to the $488,000 earmark in here for more police overtime, that effectively doubles the police overtime budget. Can we afford that on any sort of sustainable budget? I have fought tirelessly in here to protect not having cuts to the Police Department budget. But on the other hand, we cannot just jack up the budget when we know we're facing this, the end of ARPA, we know we're facing these structural deficits. Not only are we going to whack the homeowners and the businesses of this community with unprecedented type tax increases, we also have no blueprint to maintain it in six months. That's just not responsible budgeting. And there's other things in here, you know, that I just cannot get behind. We're going to start paying $90,000 to give tenants attorneys. Come on. Is that the job of the Hoyok City Government to start paying for lawyers for people to get into disputes and civil engagements between them and their landlords? Is that what we've, we've now run out of things to spend city money on that are our responsibility? We're now going to start hiring people, lawyers to fight their, start hiring lawyers to fight landlords? I just don't think, it's a noble thing that we have pro bono legal services out there. Certainly, I'm an attorney and from time to time, I'm able to do pro bono work, but the state does provide support in this area to do that. So there is already a resource. Let the state, who's sitting on billions, come forward with those type of things. We should advocate. Everybody in the room already knows about my quest to get us another $4 million in unrestricted general fund aid that this city rightly deserves because we attack these type of issues and problems and try to come up with solutions. And we're not being properly funded at the state level. It's not sustainable if we don't get those. The other thing I asked for questions about the Board of Health added sanitarian position. I said, okay, you want to add another $50,000 position? No problem. Provide us a business case for it. They said, well, this person is going to put out do tickets and flex squad and fines and whatnot and expediated tax collections. Great. Show us how that, you know, how you're going to do that. Make the business case for how it's going to cover this position. We'll get back to you. You know, but yet it's, you know, can we break this up a little bit? Nope. Take it or leave it. And, you know, the mayor has fought for this and I guess he feels at this point it's voted up, voted down. Hopefully, if it does get voted down, that we'll have other proposals. The other thing that concerns me is you don't really know what exactly you're getting. You're voting for a million dollar effectively slush fund that the mayor can spend on whatever he wants. He could vote, he could spend it on the things on this list? He could spend it on anything he wants, quite frankly, because it's when they take it out of departmental budgets and they take it out of departmental line items that are earmarked for that specific purpose, it's just a line, a million dollars, and you hand it to the mayor and he can spend it on whatever thing he wants. Is that how we're running the government now? I don't give that kind of discretion to any mayor, not Mayor Garcia, right down the lineage for all the six or seven mayors I've been here with yet. And I'm not going to start now. There's a lot of things that stimulate a lot of great conversation and are noble things, but the fact of the matter is this is not ready for primetime. This is not sustainable. This is not affordable. And I sure as heck, in the midst of all of that, not even knowing if we 100% need to spend all these monies, I'm not going to directly, dollar for dollar, ask every resident for at least another $107 out of their pocket, on top of the couple hundred other dollars we're going to need out of their pocket. I also asked the question about the examination of the opioid funds. In this situation, I asked, well, what can we spend money on? What can we do? So should we be spending opioid settlement monies on some of these line items? Or could we be using some of those funds to offset other costs, mindful of this $2 to $3 million structural deficit that each and every one of the 13 of us are going to be facing in the next six months to balance the fiscal year '25 budget? Because you don't have a choice to balance that budget. It has to be. This isn't Washington where you can just add it to the debt. You have to have a balanced budget. So, and does that mean layoffs? I don't know. I don't want to add five cops here and then lay off seven later. This, this needs a lot more discussion and needs, I think we can get this better and take some of the best parts of this and do it at a later time. I would encourage a no vote at this time for those reasons. Thank you.
Councilor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of forgot I put my hand up a while ago. I, this is a, this is a tough vote. It's not a black or white vote. I don't like every aspect of this plan. I voiced that to the mayor. I asked some questions and I didn't get all of them answered. There's, I feel like I wanted to see more about what our outcomes and sort of the benchmarks are. I was told that they do exist. I look forward to seeing them and just, you know, learning more about that. All of that being said, you know, I'm glad that it's, the mayor listened to some of our concerns about adding 13 new officers to the budget because I definitely would not be able to vote in favor of that. It did not feel sustainable or responsible physically. That being said, I have to respectfully disagree that this would be a slush fund. I actually feel like the, was it the special act, that this, or the article, special article, my apologies. I feel as though it gives us more of an opportunity for oversight. I don't believe it's as if the mayor is going to go spend a million dollars as soon as we approve it. In fact, I, my understanding is really that this fund allows us to dedicate revenue, ARPA revenue, replaced to last beyond this fiscal year. So, you know, I am a city councillor because I believe in seeing the bigger picture. I'm trying to see the bigger picture here. There's, I don't know if there's, there would ever be a plan that the mayor could present to us that would make every single person in this room happy. I just think that's impossible, but that's not why we're here. So I'm willing to accept that I don't agree with everything in order to get some of the things that I want. You know, the, there's a lot of things in this plan that are good. There's a lot of things in this plan that deserve to be asked of questions and to be frank, I don't appreciate sometimes the response that I get when I do decide to finally ask questions. So I will say that much. You know, if this gets approved, I hope the mayor and the police chief are prepared for more oversight because this is a big vote. So I just want to thank everyone. Public safety was a great discussion. I wish everyone was there. Finance was a good discussion as well. So I just wanted to give those thoughts. Thank you.
Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on my own opinion, I think there's a lot of good points being made here this evening and it is something a bit unorthodox, a bit unusual, the way we're going about this. And I think I highlighted that with the auditor's comments. From a financial point of view, I'm much more comfortable with, with the funding of Ezekiel's Plan because the limitation to five police officers means that the 95 police officers' ordinance cap is not going to be changed, or if it was going to be changed, it would still have to come before us to amend the ordinance. I forgot to mention, but important that the chief did say that between now and the end of the fiscal year, there looks to be three to four retirements within the Police Department itself, which will change, will have an impact on it. We can talk about that line item with patrol officers or even firefighters or heavy equipment operators in the DPW and even in the best of times, we are never fully staffed. We don't always even fund up to the max because we know in a given year, how many new officers may be coming out of the, off the reserve list into the academy and into the, to the ranks of police officer. What I, what I do want to speak about is one of the parts of Ezekiel's Plan, and I like a lot of Ezekiel's Plan, but I agree, some of it is moving, some of it is items that should just be done within the budget without the additional dollars and probably will be done. For one, one thing I like though, and I can attest to this firsthand, is Operation Safe Streets. Not too long ago, we had a Chief of Police, Chief Scott, who did take back our, take back our streets. As a probation officer, I work daily in Hoyok District Court. Take back our streets did not do anywhere near what three nights out in Operation Streets have done, Safe Streets have done this year. The arrests have been made, our arrests from distribution to trafficking to some possession, some trespass, which I understand, and, but also it's legitimate pickup of warrants of people, criminals, you know, that are before the Hoyok District Court who had warrants for failing to appear for their court, their court dates. And it's, it's been successful from public safety point of view of taking this type of person off the street and putting them where they belong, a right to, to tell their side of the story, but a right to be adjudicated within the court system itself. Safe Streets is, it's not just the police doing the operation, it's also code enforcement, which is a big key of it. big key of it. And, and we've, was picked up, I think, uh, in, in terms of enforcement of, you know, of our buildings, enforcement of health codes, building codes has slacked off over the last couple of years. And that's equally important because when code enforcement is not there, the criminal element can easily occupy an apartment, occupy a building, occupy a neighborhood. And the criminal, you know, type of, uh, trade that, that is out there becomes much easier for, uh, for those to, who participate in it. So I, I think it's from affordability. I, I've never questioned Counselor Jardang when it comes to affordability. It's what Kevin is about, and I understand. And affordability is what we are all about. But I also think that there's a time when you have to spend money to get results. And we have Ezekiel Plan before us. If you believe in just three quarters of Ezekiel's plan, the plus outmind, uh, distance the, um, the negative, then we need to spend some money to get Ezekiel's plan going and to make our neighborhoods and our streets across the city safer. Um, I'm willing to take that chance. I, I believe in Mayor Garcia. He heard us. He changed the plan. He heard us. The chief of police heard us. The Board of Health Director heard us. It's not a new position. It's a refunded position, an ordinance that are, in a position that already exists by ordinance. And I think the more enforcement we get, we can collectively as a city say, we're making Holyoke a little bit safer. I'm willing to take that chance.
Counselor Bartley.
Thank you. Um, uh, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no, uh, but only because of, of the unsustainability of this program and the fact that all these positions, any of them, and then these programs, these departments, they're not even created, Mr. President. We're putting the cart way before the horse. Come to us with a proposal for each department and let us debate it and let us get a setup and ordinance. Let us go in regular order. This is doing everything fast, quick. Give us some money and we'll talk about it later. I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the right way to go. I certainly credit the mayor. Um, and I'm going to give him a compliment. So for any counselors to get mad at me for, you know, speaking back to the mayor, uh, he does a great job. It's an impossible position, Mr. President. He's doing everything he humanly can. It is, it's an overwhelming job. And I, I credit the mayor so much for bringing this before us. I'd like to take it piece by piece. If he would prioritize the top three things and we can go in regular order for the next six months, and when it comes to budget time, we can have these debates. He can put in the budget and we can talk about whether or not it can be cut, whether or not it can be preserved. Six funding sources, I'll finish on this point. Six funding sources. Maybe somebody can tell me what ARPA revenue replacement is, because that's one of them. That's the future funding. ARPA revenue replacement. What is that? Well, none of you know, because it doesn't, it doesn't, no one, who knows? Capital stabilization. Well, we, we know what capital stabilization is. Uh, you know, Counselor Lisi and several other counselors really want to get this going. And, and to, to the mayor's credit, we have a capital stabilization account. Opioid settlement funding. Not one person in here knows what the opioid settlement. We know that Governor Healey, when she was AG, she was instrumental in suing, uh, the, that family. And, uh, it's on 60 Minutes all the time. And, uh, but, but we don't know if you can use that for any of this. It's, it's completely amorphous. Home ARP. I don't know what that is, so I'll just accept that it can be done. Local appropriation. That's the fifth one. Well, we all know what that is. Okay. That's, that's our property taxes. So that one's a guaranteed source of revenue, right? We, we know that's real. And the last one is, this is my favorite one, county, state, and federal funding partnerships. In other words, you're making it up. Now, I know that's kind of mean, but there's no detail. There's, there's not even, first of all, there's, we don't have county government anymore. There is no longer county government in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with the exception of Dukes County and that, those, those millionaire islands now off the, off the coast of Cape Cod. Their county government doesn't exist, and yet I've got a funding source of, of county partnership. There is no county government. It's disbanded. As a matter of fact, uh, Mr. President, you'd be proud of me. I, I did the closeout audit for Hamden Hampshire Counties. How about that? So, and it all worked out, it all worked out well. That, that was some, uh, 16 years ago. So there's no county government, and yet we're putting it down here as a fu- funding source. Wow. And then we've got the state. Well, well, it's true. You know, we know the state has multi billions in, in unclaimed revenue, but you can't really get that. And then we also know it has a rainy day account, but we don't really have any access to that. And I haven't heard anything from Rep Duffy or Senator Vellis about this. And then the federal funding. Okay. Well, good luck with that. So, uh, I, I know, I know we did very well with ARPA and the city did some fantastic projects, but you can't tell me you're going to take a chance going forward with this. I mean, these are all fine programs, but you, you're going to say, well, let's take a chance and let's, let's do this because two thirds or three fourths or eight, whatever it is, is good? It gets us only so far. These predicted funding sources, they're amorphous. And some of them, I just point out, don't exist. And yet we're going to vote in favor of this? Now? Today? I mean, there's so many crises in Holyoke. It's hard to, it's hard to say there's no merit. Of course, there's merit to all these things. I, I even like the one with, with the housing court, although I'll tell you that, wow, that would be, uh, that would be really interesting when you've got, um, you have 200 tenants in there and somebody from Holyoke. And then are they going to go to, to the Western District Housing Court and represent indigent tenants from West Springfield or Chickaby? Is, are we doing that? Is this, that's, well, we don't know. It's not even set up. But that's what they do. That's what the lawyers for the day do in housing court. I'm, I'm there every Thursday. It's a big, it's a lot of fun. And, uh, but when you've got a packed courtroom with 300 people in it and, uh, and 200 plus are, are tenants, and of the 200 tenants, probably 195 are indigent, none of them have their own lawyer. Um, and now we're going to say a Holyoke funded lawyer is going to represent somebody from outside the city? Is, is that what they're arguing? We don't know. Uh, you know, Mr. President, it's, if we could just put a pause on this, bring it up in regular order, piece by piece over the next six, seven months, six months, I guess, with the, we're halfway through the fiscal year. I, I think you can make some really good progress on it. And I'd be happy to work with the mayor and anybody in this room, um, to, uh, to move any of this stuff forward, uh, to the best of my ability. But right now, this, this huge lump sum, I can't support it. Thanks.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't want to repeat many of the comments that have already been made because I think I agree with a large majority of them. So at the risk of being a little overly simplistic, I find myself looking at the overall budget and the overall tax levy and our current status with our finances. And for me, to go back to our citizens and taxpayers and say, the tax levy that was going up 3 million, that will cost you probably over $200 a year more, is now going to go up over 4 million and cost you over $300, when throughout the last six months, the main feedback I got from our residents is, don't keep raising our taxes. Every year, my property tax bill is killing me. My pay isn't going up. I'm living on a fixed income and with the inflation, I'm getting crushed. And so I think in light of all of the spending that got approved in the supplemental budget already, just from the affordability perspective for our citizens that will bear the brunt of this to the tune of probably 77% of the budget, um, it's just not affordable for them and our city. And the other thing that I would note is we just spent $300,000 having assistance in our treasurer's department. And every other city around us has already certified their free cash and they know what they have to work with. But we are still trying to make budgetary changes and look at adding programs and positions. And we really don't have a handle on 2023 yet and our cash positions. So I'd like to see us get our footing a little stronger. And I guess I would echo the comments of those that said to take it piece by piece and get into the specifics of each thing and how it would work out. Because I don't see how we'd even bring on five more police officers as an example in the next six months. So, thank you.
Counselor Gibner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so there was a lot of information shared in the public safety, um, meeting. There were in-depth presentations. I'm also on the side where I feel like there's a lot of good parts of this plan. Um, it does look like about one and a half million come from, um, revenue replacement from ARPA and from the opioid settlement. Um, I have seen the opioid settlement numbers. There are spreadsheets available. It's public information. Um, I can't imagine that, that we aren't already looking at the criteria of what kind of programs, um, can be funded with opioid funds. So I just wanted to point out that those numbers do exist. They will be ongoing. The settlements, um, that funding source at least will continue for years. So I think that is definitely a positive. Um, and yeah, I think, like, there's a lot of things on here. I think really incorporate many ideas from the council over this last, you know, last year, year and a half. So I would hate to think that after we've spent so much time trying to add all these ideas and create different, um, different departments or different types of programs in the city, and we've been heard and we've, um, the mayor has gone back and forth with us and the chief has come back and forth with us. They've spent plenty of hours in our meetings discussing, um, helping us understand what, what these different, what Ezekiel's plan is about. And also making sure that our ideas over the years have been incorporated into this plan. So when I look at this, at Ezekiel's plan, I not only see, um, things that were added, but mostly I see things we've been talking about this whole time since we've started on the council. I mean, there's, there's items in here that were, were orders in the first, in the first meeting. So, um, I would argue that, again, if, if you are in favor of 75% of this plan, I think it's worth voting for. I think we need a lot of things in this city. Um, we're not going to be able to get around paying for things in this city. Um, and I don't think we can just continue to eternally discuss every aspect of, of this plan. I mean, it'd be nice to break it all apart, but I, I also feel strongly that we could move forward with it. Thanks.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Mr. President. So like Counselor Murphy Ramboletti and Counselor Gibner, um, I also agree. There are very good parts to this plan. You know, there, there were some parts where I was a little bit concerned. And I keep hearing counselors mention money, 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 which is also a valid concern. But as I'm sitting here listening to everyone speak and hearing money, 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 I can't help but to think about, since when did money become more important than life? See, I, born and raised in this city, the lower wards has had its hardships and it continues to have its hardships. I can't imagine having a child in school who already having trouble in school and going back to that war zone. I can't imagine that. I can't imagine being the parent in fear for their child. I, I just, I, I have trouble getting that through. Why is money more important than life? You know, I'm not sure how often counselors on here drive to, through the lower wards, and I'm not talking about just during election season. But how often do you go down to these lower wards and see what the lower wards are going through? Like what these people see day to day? We can't keep saying, well, I mean, it's money. We can't afford it. Something's got to give. And, and kudos to the mayor who was shut down when the first plan was presented and said, okay, I'm going to take this back. We're going to sit down, try to figure something out. And then he goes and he does all this work with other departments and, and, and trying to make something work. And only for another counselor to be condescending to all that hard work and throwing it and casting it to the side. I'd like to say that an elected official, it is our responsibility, yes, to protect the taxpayers, yes, but to protect the people first. The people. And I'm pretty sure after I'm done with this, some counselor is going to say something smart. But you know what? You can take that with you, man, because it's not going to change my mind and it's not going to change my heart. And people who are listening and tuning in, people who really value life over the dollar will understand where I am coming from and that this city deserves better. Safety before all. One life is too much. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
Just real quick, um, for me, it's not necessarily about the money with regards to this. For me, it's about, um, protecting the traumatic experience of possible kids in the communities that are being over policed on a regular basis. Um, it was just the other day that I know that, uh, unfortunate, uh, person that, uh, they went to drop their kid off at school and after they left school, they, they got, they got taken right there and arrested. Uh, but how does that impact the kid that knows that his dad got picked up right after he got dropped off from school? Right? So that's the piece for me, right? When I was a 14, 15-year-old hanging out playing, uh, street football, during T-Boss, I got pulled over to the side by cops because I had a shirt that said Flatbush because I played football against South Holyoke prior to that in South, in, in, what's it called? Um, we call it, um, the Bonning Field. We used to call it a word that I can't say here. Um, but at the end of the day, we, coming back from playing football over there, I got pulled over by, uh, a narcotics division team that used to police the streets in Holyoke and no longer do as they used to. Now they work in collaboration with different entities throughout, um, Handing County, um, allowing our tax dollars to go out and work in different communities versus just in Holyoke. Um, it literally shaped my experience with police from 13, 14. When I was like seven, eight years old, I think it was Officer Lopez and Sustash. They, I mean, when I was like seven, eight years old, um, my mom knew them personally and they gave me and my brother like police officer uniforms for Halloween. We were like police officers for Halloween. And it was like going from that experience, then to the one where I'm pulled over to the side because I'm wearing a shirt, um, during a TNT, Tuesday and Thursday, which is T-Boss, when they come through and they start harassing the community. Um, that literally shaped my vision on police, right? And how policing is done. This is why I'd have the perspective that I have. It's why I take the approach that I have. Not everybody has that, but at the end of the day, for me, I am looking out for the little kid that's out there, not wondering and not understanding why there's police in their neighborhood. And if they do understand why the police are raiding their friend's dad that's actually a cool guy, but they don't understand that. What's the concept? There's a lot to unpack there and we as a community still have not addressed that. Because during mass incarceration peak times was around the times of 2003, four, five, six, seven, eight within the country. And those were all during Chief Scott's era. So to me, that's what's hurt this community the most. We have not dealt with it and we have, and we're not doing anything to deal with it now. And it feels like we're just adding more police. That does not solve the issue. All it does is cause the next little 13, 14-year-old kid possibly to run into the same experience and have the same issues and possibly be incarcerated. So for me, that's one of the main issues that I have with the Operation Safe Streets and, and the police aspect, because they're not literally breaking down how they're going to use the money. Like if they could do that, that would be great. But for me, impactfully, it's more of about traumatic experience that police create. But for me, impactfully, it's more of about traumatic experience that police create in the community when they're overpolicing, and there's nothing that we're doing to mitigate that. So, thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Okay, so, I'll make a couple points here. Number one is, you know, sometimes we so think about our own situation, we need to also look at what's going on around us. We have a city like Springfield that's very demographically like our own. They're over here talking about taking $9 million. Oh, by the way, they already have certified free cash. We don't. Ask yourself why, you know? They're taking $9 million and putting it on their tax levy, and we're over here talking about how much more we can add on to the tax levy. Chickaby, $3 million they took to put on the tax levy. You know, you can't live on love. Funny how people want money to pay bills. And to bankrupt this city, when you know you have a structural deficit and just take another million dollars and throw it on the furnace that you have no way to sustain long term, is just not fiscally responsible. And to then, you know, you hear, when I guess you run out of arguments, you start talking about what streets do city counselors drive in. I've, and I've heard that speech quite a few times in this room, and it's, you know, I, I think we really should maybe start publishing our lifelong addresses on here about who lived on Chestnut Street, and who lived in Bowden Village, and who are these? You know, when I was a single mom, I had a single mom, and we were poor as church mice, you know? I didn't come down here and say, oh, you know, feel sorry for Kevin Jordan, and have that whole story. For years and years and years. And I lived on Chestnut Street. Blah, 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 blah. I mean, in apartment blocks, and the whole story. I don't feel like I have to tell my whole life story over and over again for, to, to have sympathy about these type of arguments. And I don't even want to go to that level, because quite frankly, it would be so easy for me to say, you know, who was even voting, or who wasn't voting, when people were down here working and doing work for the city of Holyoke? Fact of the matter is, is if we don't create a sustainable budget, we bankrupt the city long term. We're gonna set the city up for another massive tax override, because what happens is, when that ARPA money leaves, which is what we're balancing this all on, we're gonna have to turn to a tax override. There's no magic pill coming out of the sky to fund all this stuff long term. So, why do we do that to ourselves? And then we say, because we feel like we're doing something? It's easy to sit here and just spend money instead of making things more efficient. We know, we, we have all these vacant police positions already that aren't filled, yet for six months, we're gonna just give the money to fund five more, and all this overtime, and we have no definitive plan that that's gonna stop some shooter on Maple Street. We have no idea that that's gonna happen. Look at all, we spend so much on police in this city, and that incident happened. We're spending twice what Westfield spends. We spend way more than Chickaby does. Per capita, what we spend here is through the roof on law enforcement, and wildly needed, no question, but at the same time, we're gonna tank the whole system. We're gonna literally tank our police long term if we create these paradigms where we're just adding to money that we know we don't have. And then you're gonna be laying off firefighters, and laying off cops, and laying off DPW workers, or what's really gonna, I think, ultimately happen here, is we're gonna put these crazy propositions to voters, give us another two, three million tax override in a couple years, or you're not gonna get a cop on your street, and you're not gonna get a firefighter, and you're just gonna take, and take, and take from the poorest people in the state who already have the highest residential burden. You know, if we had the extra money, and we could chip away at some of these things, some of these things shouldn't even be funded by city funding, first of all, but some of the things that are, are noble, no doubt, and if we were doing great, do it, but how do you tank the whole system and spend money you don't have? It's like the family that's living on credit cards, and I'm watching this slow-motion train wreck right in front of me, and yet, all we talk about is we love people, and we wanna do this. If you wanna run a city on love that doesn't pay the bills, and you don't have this money, and yet you spend it anyways, and it's gonna tank the whole system, and we have an obligation as stewards to protect police jobs, to protect firefighters, to perfect DPW workers, all these things, so we don't tank the entire system, or just hand the citizens who are already gonna get this massive $3 million tax increase, and now make it $4 million tax increase. Again, I just wanted to be said, I said my little piece over here on this, I made it crystal clear about where I'm coming from. Good people can disagree. I hope I'm wrong, but unfortunately, math does not lie.
Seeing none, motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call a vote. Yes, you're voting for the million dollars.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Waldenando Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Seven yeas, six knees.
So, you need nine for this one, because, yeah, so you need two-thirds. So, that one doesn't carry.
Your motion reconsider or action to lay on the table?
Motion reconsider and lay on the table is seconded. No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ladies on the table. All right. 20A, B, F, H, all been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I think we're back to 18F. Commandant Orange was referred in order that the city council add a section for battery storage facility. Recommend it be adopted. Motion be receive, adopt. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. This is coming to the city council at the request from Planning and HG&E to add language so that people in residences can get, store electricity, and perhaps bring it back to the grid, and then in the business areas of the city, larger battery storage units can be installed to create more opportunities for efficiencies with our grid. So, we had a number of public hearings on this. Folks came in from the various departments. The language was reviewed in detail at ordinance committee, and this recommended language, which is quite lengthy, has been made available to you and has been available in committee for at least two rounds of meetings prior to bringing it to council. In this language, HG&E would be the determiners of the residential storage situations, and if it is a large battery storage unit, it would be subject to a major site plan review by the planning board. That's a thumbnail sketch. If other members wish to add more, feel free. Thank you.
Seeing no one, so motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained. Clerk will call a vote. Yes, you're voting for 18F.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Waldenando Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Will you approve that one? 18G, commandant orange was referred in order with community support, or that our trash ordinance be updated to reflect the following, and there's a list. Recommend that be adopted. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. So, this is coming to you from ordinance committee on a 3-2 vote. We had a lot of discussion in committee. There were attempts made to amend the legal form that is before you, to try to incorporate concerns and, in some cases, promises that have been made to residents relative to the new trash receptacle initiative. A majority of the committee did not want to entertain amendments to the language, and so, on a 3-2 vote, you have the legal form in front of you. So, that is the majority report from the committee. So, being in the minority in this regard, I would like to offer the minority view. This took a very narrow approach, and in the doing of it, things were not included, such as the 35-gallon trash containers, the ability of people to put their yard waste in barrels, things like that, that I believe were essentially unintentionally omitted, however, are omitted with the legal form that you have before you. I would just submit, this is not ready to thoroughly address the concerns of the residents relative to this new initiative, but I leave it to the will of the body. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
So, I, I guess I was in the majority. Thank you, Madam Chair and Council President. So, speaking on behalf of myself, other people that were in the majority could speak for themselves, but for, for me, I was in the majority in taking the language as is. One, mainly just so that we changed the, the ordinance now, so that we're no longer functioning, how do you say it, out of ordinance or breaking the law. It seems to be a constant in certain departments where it's okay to continue to not follow charter or city ordinance at times, right? So, for me, trying to mitigate that is one of the most important things, and getting this order forward, the language forward approved. All the other concerns that were brought up, they sounded to me as they could be amendments later on, once the, the trash study gets put out and reported on, and once the, the mayor and the, the DPW department, or the director of DPW come together and actually put together the plan of how they want to move forward with receptacles, with possible recycling. I think for me, one of the other things is, is that, one of the major pieces that I, I think people are missing with this overhaul of, of the trash thing, is that we're trying to save costs, right? We're trying to cut back on costs on dispensing of trash, right? We're trying to see how much trash we actually put out. We're trying to see how much we can recycle, so that way, we're not adding more money to the tax dollar, I mean, to, to, adding a larger bill to the taxpayer ultimately. The more trash you throw out, the more it costs. I was asking for numbers. I hadn't gotten them yet from the director of DPW because he was out, but when I get the numbers, I'll, I'll file in order to public safety, so we can have a larger conversation around it. The idea is, if we're talking about that we're a strapped city for cash and we're broke, one of the easiest ways to mitigate or cut back, or to save money, or to be financially, fiscally responsible, is to cut back on the easiest things, and trash is one of those things. And with the 96-gallon barrel, to be honest, if people want to go smaller, I'm with that 110%, but I think it'd be a better conversation, so that way, we could hash out how to do that and go through that process. But, if you were to Chickaby, I think they got a 35-gallon barrel, so if you want more than that, 96-gallon is huge. That's a huge barrel. If you're throwing out more than 96 gallons of trash, some of the counselors brought up, what if you got a family of seven or eight? That is a good conversation to have. That can be an amendment that later on, we add on to the ordinance. Once we have the conversation, we hash out with DPW what it's gonna look like, what are the criterias, but for now, the most important thing, important thing was to get the ordinance changed, so that it matches, so, so that DPW can actually do their job and not be breaking the ordinance or law of the city. So, that's my perspective on why I voted on that, and I believe the other counselors, if they want, that were part of majority, can speak on it. Thank you.
Counselor Gibner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out that in the second part of this section that starts with a three, the, it should read 96 gallons. We had mentioned that in the meeting, and they were, they were supposed to update it, so I just wanted to point that out. Also, I don't, I don't need to repeat any of the things that Counselor Rivera just said. I agree with them. As part of the meeting, it, it's pretty clear to me that there's a lot of things we do that do not follow ordinance currently, so it makes sense to me to update the ordinance. I do agree that there's other things that could be considered, but I feel like those direction, that direction should come from the DPW. I did have a conversation with the director of DPW and asked him about some of these things. The main one, which was, that came up, was having exceptions for citizens and residents that need a smaller bin because of their, where they live, or what kind of storage they have outside of their house, you know, the type of home, the age of the person, or maybe they have mobility issues. So, he did mention that he already has people calling, he has a list of people he's been meeting with, and there are three different barrel sizes at the DPW that he does show to people. So, even though it's not hashed out in ordinance yet, there are options for residents if they really do need a, a different-sized barrel, and they can be in touch with DPW. So, I think once the DPW tells us what, what those are, or what they've come down to agree upon, they can tell us. I don't think we need to dictate to the DPW what works best for the city. I understand the concerns of some of our residents, but they are being addressed, so I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes. First thing I want to say is a compliment to my colleagues on the ordinance committee. We agreed on probably 95% of everything. I gotta be honest, I was puzzled by the whole, let's just pass this as is, that came to us in the first draft of, from the Law Department version of it, as opposed to waiting two weeks. And should be noted, Carl had a medical thing and procedure, and he wasn't able to make it to the ordinance meeting. We should have had, at a minimum, if you're gonna draft an ordinance like this, you might want to have the DPW superintendent actually at the meeting. He wasn't able to make the meeting, not to any of his fault, but the gentleman had a thing he, he obviously had to attend to. So, we could have waited two weeks for this. It should be noted that, number one, they already went and did it, even though we already have an ordinance. So, the whole thing about, let's not break the ordinance, it's already been broken. I mean, this ordinance has been on the books since 2011. They went and just started handing out for $650,000 barrels to everyone that, even though the ordinance says you can't do this. So, what would have been a couple more weeks to actually get it right? So, here's the problem about what we didn't get right in this draft, and to say, well, do it wrong now, but you can fix it down the road, that's not really the way I make the sausage in terms of legislating. I'm a kind of like, let's do it right, and then, you know, if you don't foresee something, you know, maybe you make a mistake and you fix it later, and I'll, and I'll come back to that point in a minute. So, the first one is right out of the box, the most obvious, right? Which is, if you have a hardship, the only relief you can get under this ordinance is that you have to get a 64-gallon barrel. That's the, what it says in the ordinance, okay? Says, "In cases of hardship, the city shall provide one 64-gallon receptacle, receptacle to be used for rubbish collection." That wasn't the plan. The plan was, you had the choice of the medium-sized barrel or the 35-gallon barrel that many disabled and seniors have been using for decades in this city. They wanted that as an option. Why we don't give them that option? So, this ordinance says it is illegal to have a 35-gallon barrel. So, this ordinance says it is illegal to have a thirty-five gallon barrel, period. Why would I vote to do that when I can simply fix it to allow it to be done? You know, this is, this canvas, this masterpiece is still on the canvas, it should be completed and done the right way. So, the point is, everybody, I would hope, I've yet to hear anybody make an argument against allowing seniors, disabled, people who don't have a need for a ninety-six gallon barrel, or a sixty-four gallon barrel to have a thirty-five. Carl says, "Absolutely, we should have considered that in the first place, we're going to work, that you can trade your barrel in." This ordinance doesn't allow that to happen. Next one is, you have a large family, you have five, six, seven, eight people in a family, you should be allowed to be able to go to the superintendent and make the case, to say, "Can I purchase a second barrel? Is there any possibility?" Maybe, you know, to have a family of two or three, and then to have a family of eight, not everybody has the same family life circumstance going on, and we should build in some level of flexibility for that. Third point is, it doesn't allow any hardship flexibility for people who have unique living situations. For example, I know seniors who live in Philadelphia cottages in this community, and they've got ten stairs where they have to bring this barrel down to the street. So, it's sitting up on their front porch, they don't have a place to put this, and they sure as heck don't want or need a ninety-six gallon barrel. Maybe, we gotta figure something out for those type of situations where they either have no place to store it, or they have no way to get a barrel, or any barrel, up and down, or, we also have to address the issue which has left, been left unattended, what happens when there's damaged barrels? What happens when there's lost barrels? What happens when there's stolen barrels? Who's ultimately going to be responsible for those things? That hasn't been addressed in this. So, you know, if people say, "Well, I can't get my barrel back up on my porch, I leave it on the sidewalk, but, or I leave it in the street, and so, because I can't physically move it, and then somebody damages it, steals it, who knows what, now I gotta come up with another hundred dollars to go replace this barrel, even though you didn't allow me any exemption to my circumstances." So, the point is, why not just do it the right way and, and put these things in here? I also, you know, have to, one of the things I'd like to talk to, and I have complete faith in the DPW director in terms of being reasonable with these hardships, but maybe there should be built in an appeal where they can go to the DPW commission, uh, if they feel like they're not being treated fairly. You know, those are representatives of the mayor, so I'd like to build that in, but I can't support this in its current form. I made a commitment to the seniors and the other people in this city that I would make sure that they have a capacity to get a thirty-five gallon barrel. That was promised to them. Number two, large families have to have some vehicle, all these other points, we made these promises to people. This ordinance should do that, and we haven't done our job yet if we pass this in its current form. This isn't ready for prime time. Thank you.
Counselor Barley?
Yeah, uh, yeah, warning, I'm going to compliment the Law Department and the ordinance committee. So, Jane did a great job putting this together, the language here is excellent, the ordinance committee, I, I mean, I agree with just about everything in here, maybe one exception. I'm just going to point out that, and one of my biggest exceptions is to give this carte blanche power to the superintendent. No, I don't think so. There, there should be establishing an appeal process if necessary, and it should be the Board of Public Works, that's their job to vote on it. They, they, they're representative, you know, I mean, we've had experience in the past where department heads, we're all human, we get it, just don't like somebody, and they're not going to agree with anybody's application, lock out the door and go pound sand. Well, that's, that's, that's no, that's no good. So, if you have an appeal process on this, I think that'd be smart. I would also say, you know, I, I wish we just could kind of back off the part about dictating from city council, because, you know, we don't dictate. I filed an order in committee relative to thirty-five, because I heard it from constituents. That's why I filed the order, Mr. President. I'm not saying me, or, or my family, I'm just saying, these are, these are constituents. So, I, I would hope that we could, I would hope that we could, um, send this back to ordinance, only, I mean, just to, just to tweak it a little bit and, and add to it, frankly, and, and, and to give, you know, as Kevin said, to, to say that, you know, why do we, why do we have to tell the DPW superintendent anything? Well, gee whiz, because he's the one that went ahead and did this anyhow. Not him, okay, the board, not, not Carl, Carl was kind of after the fact. So, and part of it was, part of it was certainly my fault, I should have been more on point when, when Terry allocated the money, I should have consulted more with the Law Department myself, so I'm partly to blame too, so I should have looked into the ordinance a little bit deeper than I did, and I wish I had, but, bottom line is, I think everybody did a great job with this, Jane, the ordinance committee, and, but I, I think a little more work needs to be considered, at least, and I feel like the best way, instead of having amendments here on the floor, is to ship it back to ordinance. Linda, the chair, will take it up in timely fashion, or whomever it is next year, will take it up in a timely fashion, and then we can just figure it out in regular order, send it back and be done with it. That's my take. So, I, I would like, I will make that motion once everybody's had a chance to weigh in.
All right, Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to point out that this tiny section of that ordinance is just a small section of the entire ordinance, and a lot of the things we're talking about, I think there's a huge misunderstanding as to the intention here, and I also have to say that three of us on that five-person committee felt like it was done right. So, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding as far as, I don't know if anyone else took the time to read the entire ordinance there, of all the, like, refuse and trash and yard waste and recycling, but it's more than these two paragraphs. And so, my intention with this was to pass this section of the ordinance, and then go back into the other sections that pertain to yard waste and recycling, and the exceptions to, you know, members of the community who need it. My intention with this was not to say that this is the whole ordinance and we need to throw the rest out. This is merely a tiny portion of a very long ordinance that addresses many things, and this is merely one section complete, in my opinion. So, I personally don't think it needs to be sent back, because I don't think we need to add to this section. I think there, that all the details that we want to hash out belong in other sections, so, I just wanted to point that out, because I feel like this right and wrong thing is, is a little accusatory, and I don't think anybody's so simple-minded as to think that these two paragraphs are our entire, uh, DPW waste removal ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Givner, thank you, Counselor Barley, thank you, Counselor Jordane for weighing in on, on the, the, the language, the overall language. I, I take Counselor Givner's point with regards to just being that piece of section, literally, that's exactly the, 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 the foundation that, or the basis that I'm working from, is that there, there's more pieces to this. As Counselor Jordane mentioned earlier, this can come back in two weeks and be brought back up in ordinance, and then we can have the language edited in different ways, but it would have to be different pieces of the ordinance if that's the case, because a lot of what came up in the conversation that day wasn't some of the stuff that's coming up today. A lot of it came up around refuse, different avenues, and, and leaf bags, and the possibility of having two or three, why people are already paying taxes and they shouldn't pay more, or something like that, like, so, there was a variety of different things that brought the conversation into different directions that led to at least myself saying, "Listen, let's just get this piece done," and then we move on to add more to the rest of the ordinance, or edit the rest of the ordinance. I do like the point that Counselor Barton pointed out, where giving the, the, the committee of, or the board of DPW the actual overall power to, to, to make these decisions, right? With regards to any stipulations or any, uh, extra special clauses you want to put in, and I actually think that that can be put into the overall ordinance as an extra stars clause pertaining to whatever the board decides to put forth. But, yes, I'd be willing to only send it back if we're gonna, um, just put the addition of the DPW board, or the committee as being the overall seer of, or making the decision-maker, but if, if it's to edit the rest of the language, I don't, I mean, for me, it doesn't necessarily make sense, but thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I tend to agree with the Chair of Ordinance that we need a little bit more for the ordinance, although I do recognize it's going in the right direction, and it is important that we eventually change the ordinance in accordance with what the DPW is doing. It's the DPW who did this without coming to us and consulting us, and DPW who did this, you know, unilaterally, without even thinking of, that there was a city ordinance, without even thinking of enforcement, and, and, and that's fine, you know, but I think we can, we can fix it. The one thing that is not, and there's only two changes in this particular language, it's the thirty-five gallon drum is the maximum in the original ordinance, we had to increase that to ninety-six gallon drum, and the other is the enforcement issue that a few people have talked about, in, when the, something happens where a property owner exceeds the ninety-six gallons, and that's, the one thing I, I, Carl Rossi was before us, and he already says he has these smaller bins for people who need, they just have to swap out with the ninety-six and get their, the next size down, or there's even a smaller size down, and that's, that's the homeowner's choice, with, it doesn't change the ordinance, because the language is about max. My issue I brought up is max, and ever since, right now, the, you know, with the, with the bins being out there, I've made a habit of driving into different neighborhoods on my way to work to look at the bins that are out. And, you know, for the most part, there aren't too many overflowing ninety-six gallon drums until the day after Thanksgiving. There was a lot of overflowing ninety-six gallon drums.
How about after Christmas? That'll be interesting.
After Christmas, I, I don't think there's an answer as to how you're going to approach it. And my issue is, if a parcel owner wishes, they probably don't need a second ninety-six gallon, but maybe a second container with the smaller version. That option should be part of the, of the language itself, before we adopt an ordinance that triggers enforcement. Chicabe has a smaller bin, I know it is, but they have an option if you overflow the bin. Yeah, but there's an option. We don't have an option in our language, and that's the difference. And I don't like Chicabe, and I agree with you, Counselor Rivera, and I, I'm pretty happy at the McGivern household with ninety-six, because we also fill a very big recycling bin itself, and I think we've, we've heard that this, you know, good enforcement will also promote better recycling. But, we have to address what happens when someone has their, their one-year-old's first birthday party at home, and the trash is overflowing in ninety-six. It should not be an enforcement issue, it should be, there's got to be an option how to take care of the occasional overflowing bin, and I just don't see it in this language, and I'd hate to see enforcement for the first time the day after Christmas.
Counselor Barley?
Yeah, I would just say, I'll be very, very crudely brief, this is the same department that some of us want to defer to it, that just went ahead and completely ignored the recycling ordinance, which is still the ordinance that we have dual stream, and when everybody said, "Okay," they literally, on their own, said, "Single stream is okay," when the ordinance is dual stream. So, they, they do need oversight, we, we do have to walk it a little bit slow. So, with that, I think I'm probably the last speaker. I'm going to make a motion to refer this back to ordinance for a limited discussion, as Counselor Barrett mentioned, and for a brief discussion, and we will, we'll hash it out and figure it out.
So, motion is to refer it back to ordinance, that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, back to committee.
You won the vote, you shouldn't be that. You got the, yeah, you won it. You win.
All right, eighteen H. Command ordinance was deferred, or that street vendors who have received a license may be granted a renewal of the license at the same location. Recommend that this be adopted. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading, and I filed this order to try to avoid the necessity of people coming in each year to a public hearing to get a license when they had already met all the initial criteria, and will continue to have to express through affidavit or submittal of materials that they continue to meet those criteria. But, in this language that everyone has before them, they would no longer have to come back into a hearing before a committee if they are remaining in the same location for which they already have a license. It's just out of an effort to streamline things, be less of a burden on small businesses, and let people continue with their business. Thank you.
So, the motion is passed the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting for eighteen H.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera? Tallman?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, unanimous vote.
Will you approve that one?
Mr. President, if we can suspend rules and take eighteen I and J as a package, please?
Motion to suspend rules, take up I and J as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I is command ordinance was deferred, nor that the city council review the law of enforcement of right of reverter complied with. J is command ordinance was referred, nor that the law department find the city council with an inventory of all outstanding rights of reverters, that's complied with. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, some clarity was sought, because historically, when there had been changes to extensions of reverters, it had been coming back to council, but I will defer to the maker of the order to provide a more detailed summary on this item. Thank you.
Counselor Jordane?
I just want to, one, compliment the Law Department, I thought they did a very nice job to put the Excel file and put that package together for us of these different rights of reverters, actually quite a few out there to, just so you're aware, if you haven't had a chance to have that for your reading material at night. I would just add, one of the takeaways from the meeting is, and here's the, here's the rub, one, there's a discussion going back and forth about, can, when the council passes a right of reverter, and it says, for example, frequently, "If you do X with, if we sell you this piece of property, and we're selling it to you for this price, you have to develop the property or use it within two years," for example, that's kind of a standard one. There is a school of thought from some, that the mayor later can change that to be two years, four years, six years, eight years, ten years, as long as he wants, without coming back to the council, okay? Uh, I'm not a big fan of that, um, school of thought, as you can imagine, and I'm of the opinion that when the council puts a condition, and if you read ordinance two-dash-two-six-six, I believe, um, see, I won't get down to the subsection, um, that section says, "And such conditions as the city council puts on it," and when we say a two-year right of reverter, we mean two years, and if it doesn't, then it should come back to us, period, for a vote, because we voted on it with that condition, okay? I think, if I'm listening to the other side of this, they're trying to say that when we give the power of the mayor to dispose the, of the property, we're allowing him this ambiguity to be able to make these changes without us. And as a council, we're going to have to be more careful and very precise in the language, almost like we've had to do in the past on bonds and different things, where we gotta dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure we make a crystal dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure we make it crystal clear, this is a two-year right of reverter and it shall not be changed but by a future vote of the City Council, and make it that precise because people are changing these to all types of additional times without coming back to us. So maybe the rights of reverter should either be longer or the, you know, they should make the pitch to us on whatever, but when we're trying to sell properties, give good prices, turn them and get them back, we don't want some people sitting on these things for two, you know, four, six, eight, 10 years. We want action, or maybe it should come back and we should sell it to somebody else. Maybe that's the discussion. And people are paying, they're paying money for these properties and they are subject to lose their money if we take it back on a right of reverter. So that might give them more of an incentive to get it done because you bought it with that condition, and if you fail and meet, don't meet that condition, you forfeit, bye-bye, my purchase price because you committed to a two-year right of reverter. Don't sign the deed if that's not what you're committing to. Demand the city give you longer if you truly need longer. That should all be negotiated. But what I don't like is, I'm not seeing new consideration being given to the city either, you know? If I sell a piece of property for $20,000 because it's developed in two years, well, I might want $40,000 or $50,000 if you're going to take six years, you're going to sit on it for six years to be developed. All of that is a material portion of the transaction, and these things should be transparent for the public and before the City Council, not, because the mayor's not allowed to add to the purchase price on his own. So if he's giving out extensions, it's at no additional consideration to the city in terms of value. So the takeaway from the meeting was, we need to be very precise and these deals, we need to have realistic goals, because I'm starting to wonder on some of these deals, they never thought it was really going to come together in two years. That was just sort of a placeholder. It does make one wonder. And so, good discussion, appreciate the law department sharing their thoughts, and there's a remedy from the council and how we can be more precise and we come out of this stronger and more precise going forward with better legal standing. So I was very pleased the order was complied with, and thank you very much.
Councilor Barley.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll tell you, any counselor here who's hearing about and understanding reverter law, I hope they consider going to law school. I mean, property law was probably the hard, I mean, I practice that area all the time. But if that was, if there was a harder class that I had to take in law school than the property, I don't know what it is, and reverters and all this stuff were like mind-boggling. But ultimately, you get through it. One thing, I'm just, I'm only going to add one thing to this, that that when we talk about City Council taking a vote, it's not about obstruction, it's not about dictating, it's simply about a balance between the executive and the legislative. There is no way that the mayor, under any law, has the authority to go ahead and on his own do anything with real property. The mayor can, yes, the mayor signs the contracts to sell the lots or sell lots, but after a City Council vote, A, we have to declare a surplus, B, we have to vote by simple majority, yes or no on the contract. So there's a process. It's not about obstruction, it's about simple balance of power and having things be out in the open. So now what we're hearing from Jane is with almost a legal opinion that was not even requested, she went ahead and gave all this litany and citing several cases, which, I mean, I think they speak to the opposite of what she said, citing several cases that say, the mayor can do what he wants with the reverter. Well, that's, that's not, that can't possibly be true. And, and, and why would he want to have that true? And why would we want the mayor to do that? So the mayor, as much as we like the mayor, I mean, some of us, you know, it's going to be a time, you're going to be here for so long, some of you way beyond my terms, and there's going to be some mayors you may not like as much as this current mayor. And all of a sudden, the mayor, the executive has all this authority to just go ahead and do it in room one, as opposed to room 11? I hope that that day never comes. If we have to file certain orders relative to specifying what can and can't be done with reverter clauses and who can extend them, then we'll do it. I disagree with Jane vehemently on that aspect of the of the letter. No disrespect, obviously, but that's something I don't think we should allow to stand. So that's just something for down the road, way down the road. This is not high priority truly, and we all know that, but I just want to say those few words. Thank you.
Anyone further? Councilor Rivera.
Thanks, Mr. President. Reverter clauses are very tricky, and we do have some standard reverter clauses, and although it does absolutely mean, you know, we don't want someone buying property from the city and sitting on it speculating for several years. But reverter clauses are also more about use, in which, which is, I think, why the city went to some standard ones. The City Council doesn't add the reverter clause. We vote, one, to declare property surplus, allowing the mayor or allowing the mayor to designate a part of someone in the city to sell property and to market and to look for someone to come in to use property that the city doesn't really want to own because we probably got it through tax title. The second vote, the most important vote, is the vote of the negotiated price and agreement that the mayor or who he designates, the property is sold for. And a lot of times, the reverter is to make sure, if someone says, I want to buy this piece of property to do this, that that takes place. And that reverter can be a little bit tricky because a lot of times it involves the purchaser getting financing, financing getting in place, design phase and other, and especially more larger projects, you know, taking place. And sometimes some leniency on the reverter, as long as the direction is the same direction as what was negotiated when the property was purchased. So I think it's all in all, good discussion, but I just wanted to add that because there are some other aspects to reverters that, you know, are sometimes overlooked. The worst thing that can happen is someone to buy a piece of property and just turn around, and this happens in the private sector a lot, and sell it for a profit despite it was promised something else would be done with the property.
Got that right. So motion is that they've been...
We just, we just did that up by Mount St. Vincent. Just, we just did it.
So the motion, it's complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
18K, Commander Orange, who's referred, an order with community support, increased trash can minimum to 50 gallons. This is leach withdraw?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive, adopt, and accept the committee report because the order is no longer needed because we're moving to the 96 gallons.
All right, so give leach withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Thank you to the ordinance committee for all their work.
Good job.
All right, 19A, Community Finance, who's referred, an order in course master law, 44, section 53A. We accept the new vehicle, $45,000 from the Friends of Council on Aging, which was a donation. So motion be receive, adopt, pass first reading. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met and found out that the Friends of the Council on Aging have donated a $45,000 vehicle. We heard a little bit about this earlier. It's a needed for transportation purposes of getting some of our elderly residents to and from by both the Council on Aging and other services, transportation services that are provided. Anything that's donated to the city needs to come through the City Council, and we recommend that we allow this to be accepted.
So motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Calloway, if you vote yes, you're voting for the donation.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Olo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, 11 yeas.
Your vote, you approve that one. 19B, Commander Finance, hereby accept the 2023 Community Planning Grant for $200,000, no match. Motion be receive, adopt, pass first reading. Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the committee met with Aaron Vega and Jennifer Keith about the, about this grant. It's accepted via the Mass Gaming Commission, which is the impact monies, mitigation monies that are part of why with MGM Casino going into, into Springfield. They're, part of this, what they're going to do is, and I hope I'm on the right one here, but a part of this, what we're going to do is, is assign inventory, and all, especially in all the major ways. Aaron reminded me of a couple of things. I like to, like to sing the City Council every now and then, but don't worry, Megan, I don't sing that well. And, but the, you know, the high-band electric band, you know, song, signs, signs everywhere, signs, is sometimes my favorite. But this would do the inventory, this would certainly take care of, of business and then eventually replace a more unified sign that makes a lot more sense on when we're trying to get people to different destinations within the city. It's a no-match grant, and the committee recommends that we accept it.
Councilor Tomlin.
I think it's definitely a good plan here to get these signs and taking people to certain areas of the city, the merry-go-round, you know, Mount Tom, different areas, and to really get an idea of what signs maybe need to be replaced and touched up a little bit. And I disagree with Joe, he can sing great. Right, Joe?
Councilor Tomlin. So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Calloway, if you vote yes, you're voting for the $200,000.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Olo?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
11 yeas unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 19C, Fiscal Year 2024 Road Safety Program, grant of $39,880, no match. Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading. Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. From the Office of Executive Public Safety and Safety and Security is what they call themselves, we received this kind of a reoccurring grant. Chief Pratt was before us, as always, it will be used for some extra traffic patrols. I think that goes without explanation. It's always good to have a couple of traffic patrols out watching our streets. But he also said that he's going to use part of this to buy eight portable handheld breathalyzers, which I asked him, I said, doesn't every cruiser have a breathalyzer? And he says at the moment, they don't. And that's, that can be a problem when there are certain types of stops and you need a breathalyzer. So we, no match, we, committee recommends that we accept the grant.
So pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Calloway, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Olo?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
11 yeas unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 19D, would be $10,000 grant for partners and communities DBA, Health Institute of Western Mass, so $10,000, no match. Motion be receive, adopt, pass first reading. Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had Kelly Curran, our Personnel Department, Human Resource, who's doing a tremendous job since she took over that position, come in before us. This is a grant that would allow for some diversity, equity, inclusion, work within the city, more specific, some training, support for training to, to take place, which would include materials, books, refreshments and things, so that her office can provide this training. It's a no-match grant. We recommend that you, that the city accepts the grant and allow it to be used.
Motion to pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Calloway, if you vote yes, you're voting for the $10,000.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Olo?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
11 yeas unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 19F, $50,000 from dispatchers to supplies ammunition. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, Chief Pratt came before us, and he notes there's a, this is a transfer that the surplus in E911 dispatchers was due to some vacancies in the position earlier. He's almost up to a full complement, but there was, there's still a surplus, so he's living within his budget. He notes the need for additional money for supplies, specifically ammunition with the new officers that came on board and the new regulations for, for police training. Additional rounds of ammunition are used during the training period, and it's also, each, each police officer has to go through two times qualifications through the course of the year, and it adds on to additional need for rounds of ammunition for training purposes. The grant, the transfer makes sense because it's within his budget and needed is documented. We recommend allowing the transfer.
Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Olo?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
11 yeas unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 19G, $164,695.27 from capital stabilization to parks, capital outlay equipment. Motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, Carl Rossi could not join us, however, with the mayor's help and the auditor, but more so the mayor, and with a quote and an email from Carl to the request for this. This, this is to buy a lawnmower, a replacement lawnmower for the parks. This would replace a 2008 lawnmower with a, with a Toro Grandmaster 5910, which is a, a piece of equipment that's used in all the fields, both our parks and other land owned by the city, for the purpose of cutting grass and adhering to the grass itself. The lawnmower that they were using, the 2008, has a part that's obsolete. They tried to get it repaired, they tried to get it fixed, and it was just impossible. 2008 was a long time ago, and I think it's a, that that particular piece of equipment served its purpose, and we agree with the with the transfer. This would come out of capital stabilization, thanks to Mayor Garcia. It's the stabilization fund that the city council approved with him and is being well used, and we agree with this particular transfer.
Counsel Riley.
Yeah, I just, I won't compliment the mayor again, but I should, and Counsel Lisi, let's not forget, because I've just want to hurt things. But I just want to point out just how how great the fields look around Elmwood and really the whole city, because I go just about everywhere. With all the fields we have, I remember when I was up at UMass and we had my buddies come from, come visit me, how many parks you guys have in Holyoke? Well, I got a lot. There's a lot of grass to cut. And, you know, these are guys from, you know, Lawrence and Methuen and whatever, North Shore guys, and so, anyway, we we have to give them the tools of the trade to let them do the work that they need to do, and I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
All right. I thought you were gonna say you had one of these. All right, so motion is to pass the first reading.
I do a lot of grass to cut.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, Clerk Calloway vote yes, you're voting for the lawnmower.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Gibner.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Yes.
Puelo.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote.
Approve that one. J is $3,180,000 for ARPA revenue loss as a funding source for the fiscal 2024 budget. Motion be received adopt, pass first reading, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had the auditor with us, the mayor was with us as always in the Finance Committee, and this is a a bit of an accounting prior to setting our our final tax rate for the year, which is typically around this time. Unfortunately, this late in the year, but around this time of year. And we've had a lot of talk this evening about ARPA monies, revenue replacement monies. They've been around for a few years now. They go back to Mayor Murphy had the first go at it. And I think we forget, but mayors get to do whatever they want with ARPA monies. When it has a revenue impact on the budget, though, there is some accountability that has to take place after the fact in how it impacts the budget itself. This is a, the, this year's $3,180,000, which is, the vote here is just, again, taking care of the recap sheet and taking care of the accounting. And I I have to use this moment to to note to my my buddy over on the other side of the room, Counsel Jordan, and I went at it two weeks ago, about the $135,000 in the wastewater treatment fund and the addition to it. And I was a little bit ignorant because I thought it was ARPA monies and it wasn't. And if it was ARPA monies, it would have become really a wash, but it was as Counsel Jordan, and I finally surrendered when I found out it wasn't ARPA monies. But it was what Counsel Jordan said, that it would have been an addition to the to the budget, and understood the arguments after that. But this is, this is, again, accountability and our auditor, I think she does a tremendous job, is is asking us to adopt this, which is another step towards setting the final tax rate.
Motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Kevin, he admitted you're right, so hey, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good vote of confidence, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it doesn't happen all the time.
Very rarely happens.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading, Clerk Calloway, if you vote yes, you're voting for the $3 million, what, Counsel Riley, you have something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a quick comment, because I just want to just to cheer to Joe and Pete. We used to get a lot of equipment from Westover. Do we even ask Westover? I mean, they're still there. I mean, I'm glad, I was going back to prior, I'm glad that we're we're buying new equipment. We can have capital stabilization, but we used to get some really great equipment that was gently used and for like, like zero, and was donated.
We had a couple plows that used to follow the runways and they they were great.
Yeah, I remember that.
You know, the leaf, the leaf machines that we we grab, you know, grabbing up the the leafs.
I remember one year we used the equipment from either Barnes or Westover for the snow. We had the parade, they had the big clearing out the whole, the whole route and shooting the snow out.
I don't know why, just thought of it.
Good point, maybe we can, maybe we can contact them to see if we can save a few bucks.
Yep.
So we're on the second reading.
Motion adopt.
Second. Clerk will call the roll.
Joe, McGivern convinced me.
Bacon.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Gibner.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Yes.
Puelo.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Eleven yeas unanimous vote.
We vote you approve that one. There is one to pull from committee.
If I can make a motion to remove from the committee on finance a order filed by Counselor Bacon, which was later co-signed by Counselor Puelo, Counselor Jordan, and it was discussed in finance last night, and it just didn't make the agenda because it got into finance late last week on on the on the agenda. We didn't violate the open meeting law, but it didn't make tonight's agenda.
What item was that?
So this is the sewer rate information?
Oh, yes, yes, lest we forget that.
Make a motion to pull it from committee.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 So this is estimated costs for street sweeping for the next fiscal year for a purpose of decreasing the sewer rate. Recommend it's being complied with, so Counsel McGivern. So first, pull it from committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. This request came from Counsel Bacon and adopted and co-signed as I stated, adopted by the and referred to committee by the full city council. We've been waiting for this information from Viola. And I I I'm not sure exactly what got it off track, but it's the, their cost for street, uh, street sweep, uh, street cleaning, street sweeping, and a number of other items that the argument is that should not be part of the, their budget, should be part of the city budget, and the impact it would have on the on the sewer rate itself. Counsel Bacon notified me that the information finally came through. I got a copy of it, placed it on the agenda for finance last night, last week. We discussed it and we believe the orders complied with, and we'd just like to to note that and also officially give a copy of it to the ordinance committee, who may use it in their discussions on an order that I filed to look at the adjustment of the sewer rate.
Anyone for, oh, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, but I just wanted to comment that the cost that was put forth to us in describing this portion of the contract equates to approximately 50 cents on the sewer rate. So it is really looking like if we take this out, then we're in pretty good shape with the sewer rate that we have. Thank you.
No more further, so motion that's complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, we do have Public Safety next, which is 20C, E, G, and I, they're all complied with. I know he just ran out for a second. Want to come back to these when he?
Yeah, motion to table those items.
Motion is to table them until he.
Who's the vice chair?
Yep.
Who's the vice chair of the committee?
Yeah, vice chair can take. Vice chair might not be ready, might be too much pressure.
I don't know. Who is the vice chair? Who's the vice chair? Oh.
Two years into it.
You're ready, you're ready. Well, you were there.
No, we'll, we'll just wait. All right.
He's literally right there. We'll be okay.
Let the poor guy come back in.
Yeah.
Your turn, you're up.
Big fancy title.
How dare you?
Give him a second.
You gotta run the meeting, come on.
We're good, we're good.
You got a fancy title, you know?
We got you.
You gotta hang on. You're next.
All right, so there is 20.
I learned that in prison, not in play.
Um, 20E, right? E, G, and I, do you want to take my package and then discuss something?
Sure, yeah, we could do that. Fortunately, we were able to take up like six of them earlier, so that makes it easier for us.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, turn it over to you, Counselor.
Uh, E is the Committee on Public Safety to whom was referred. This one is the Board of Health, we brought in the Board of Health, the police, um, to speak about noise complaints. This was filed by Counselor Jose Moldanado Vales. Um, and it was a pretty informative conversation, but a little confusing at the same time. And as you'll see, I ended up finding a late file. It wasn't necessarily late, it was like a half hour late, but I guess it's a late file. But at the end of the day, um, the, what we learned this day is that first thing I learned was, uh, for me and some of the public, hopefully, is that the police do have the tool to measure the sound with the decibel thing. So that is an awesome feature that they have, right? The only thing is, is that they don't necessarily use it when they show up to the place, uh, and they get a noise complaint, because apparently not everybody carries one in the car. So I, if you'll see later on that I filed an order to kind of like put that in ordinance, that if you're gonna go to a noise complaint, please do the decibel reading before you actually give the ticket, because ultimately, if someone challenged it and went to court, they might win in court and then later on sue us for whatever fees they paid the lawyer to beat the case in court. So to me, uh, that's one of the things that came out of the meeting, but overall, according to Sean, Sean's office gets the phone call, um, they usually have, um, an officer that works in collaboration with them. It's a code enforcement officer, when he can or or when they can. Um, and they're they're called during a time that makes sense, um, he'll send out the code enforcement officer. If not, then, um, someone from their office will address the issue or try to go out and try to, um, address the issue as best as possible. But for the most part, um, a lot of the calls go straight to the police department, because some people call the police department directly. And when that happens, um, usually, according to the chief, that they just send out like, um, an officer to go over and and tell people to either turn the music down or write them a citation if it's more than one time that this has happened before in the past. I think for me, what it got out of that meeting is that, again, if we're giving people sound citations without actually doing the decibel reading, that doesn't kind of make sense for me. Um, we, as as a body, or whenever it was that the, that we approved the funding for the purchasing of these tools, it only makes sense that you use the tools that we spent a lot of good money on. So, um, a lot of good information came out with regards to how the process went down. Again, the video of that meeting is on YouTube. There's a lot of good pieces that came out of that. So if any of anyone in the public has any questions about noise complaints and how they're handled, go back to the meeting. Um, and feel free to reach out to Jeff, myself, I'll reach out to Jeff because he'll probably give me the link for the meeting, but, um, also other counselors as well. So that's pretty much it for that order. Um, the next one is 20G. Uh, 20G is the Committee on Public Safety to whom was referred in order to the Holy, oh, this is one, this one was the Holyoke Hub. Uh, I filed this order. The Holyoke Hub, um, we brought them in before to Public Safety when I first came on. This was almost two years ago, about March-ish of 2022. The Holyoke Hub is a collaboration between Ed Case and the Sheriff's Department and over 30 to 40, uh, nonprofit and private, um, agencies that are pretty much service providers. And the idea behind the Holyoke Hub is to try to centralize, um, how do you say, um, resp- uh, not response rate, but like trying to, um, service, uh, community members that don't necessarily, um, are, that are not receiving services. So there's a system in place where service providers can come to this meeting and present cases or quote unquote situations. These situations are 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 addressed or brought up in these meetings between 30 to 40 service providers, and then they have a level of rating of acute, um, acute something, uh, risk, acute risk of either reoffending or offending or getting in some form of trouble. Um, through this system, the people that are working in the in the working group, they vote whether or not it meets the criteria or the standard to move to the next level. When it moves to the next level, this particular person that got revert, uh, referred to the situation actually gets partnered with these agencies that can be provided as service providers. So this is, this is pretty much, uh, uh, an initiative, right, led by the Sheriff's Department, Ed Case, and a variety of service providers. And the best part to me is that it is of zero cost to the city of Holyoke and to the taxpayers. Um, so we, again, we have a variety of people working in the safety, public safety realm, and the service providing realm in the city of Holyoke, um, that are receiving a variety of different grant funds to provide these services. And, um, it's awesome that Ed Case and David Rutter and Ronde Allen were able to bring the hub together and bring everyone under a centralized situation, so that way we can handle a variety of situations. So according to, I got some notes that Ed brought out that day. He said that, um, this, so it's, so the word is situations of acute elevated risk. He said, uh, so far, um, from 41 to 60 situations, 53% of the situations have been referred from the Holyoke Public Schools. So a larger percentage of the situations have been referred but from the public schools. Um, the second, um, referral a person is, uh, organization is the Holyoke Medical Center. Then we find there's then one Holyoke CDC. Um, I've been in those meetings and I've sat in those meetings. I know the police department does refer, and so does, um, the people that work out of the, uh, the Ray Street Office for the Police Department. But, um, the way the approach is taken, they they they're trying to take a more holistic approach. So when they're incorporating police, they're trying to incorporate police in a way where they're not necessarily, how do you say it, looked at as the person that's going to arrest someone. It's more about a holistic approach and trying to help people come up. So arrests or or some form of punishment is the last resort when it comes to this. Um, currently, uh, for the, over the last two years, um, they've done, they've already, uh, handled or dealt with at least 68 situations. Um, so these are 68 different circumstances that have been brought to the table, that they have been dealt with. Um, mostly positive, um, interactions, but there is still follow up. So here we have, uh, let's say, for example, a parent that, um, has issues with their child in the school, and those issues keep arising. The 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 school presents this issue into the table, um, and then they'll ask at Holyoke Medical Center, they'll ask River Valley, they'll ask, um, any other service provider within the city, do you work with this child? And if you work with this child, what and what facet, right? So that way, how can we all come together and service this particular family and child on different levels with all the services that we provide? Um, again, that was a valuable and very informative meeting. Um, Jeff has a copy of the data that he put out. Um, I, hopefully Jeff can share that with all of us, so that way everyone can have an idea of what the numbers are, because they actually have a real research team out of Springfield College keeping track of the numbers. So this, all great stuff. Um, thank you for that. That's that particular order. And then the last one is 20I, which is, give me one second. Uh, the Sheriff's Department Veteran Services Department, and to come into Public Safety to converse about the possibility of developing a Returning Citizens Department under the Public Health Department. So here we invited the Sheriff's Department, Veteran Services, and, um, Public Health. Veteran Services, right, um, they didn't actually, they couldn't attend because I, um, as we know, we don't actually have anybody in that role yet. It would be great that when we fill that role in, that they could come in and sit in on some of these meetings. But, um, we did, we were fortunate to have Sally, I believe, Johnson from, um, the Sheriff's Department. She's, um, I think it's Assistant Superintendent, used to be the Director of All-Inclusive Support Services in Springfield. Um, and she came in and did a very detailed presentation on incarceration in Holyoke. Uh, how many people have been incarcerated, uh, or are incarcerated, how many are sentenced, and how many people are being released within the last two to three years. Um, again, that data, Jeff has a lot of it. Uh, I will ask Jeff to share it with all of you guys. I'm pretty sure he probably did. But the 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 data and Sally pretty much painted a picture where a lot of, uh, a lot of the services provided out of a Returning Citizens Office can help mitigate a lot of the vagrancy homelessness issues through that, um, office directly. And the way it's looking like, that will also be a very cheap cost to the city, because a lot of this work is already being done in different, um, in different circles. So for example, the Sheriff's Department has AISS, All-Inclusive Support Services, where they have certain counselors or caseworkers already assigned to the city of Holyoke. Um, so instead of having them sitting in Springfield, um, we could have them sitting under a roof here in Holyoke, working with people directly in Holyoke and not just, and with All-Inclusive Support Services, they're not just servicing exfelons. They're servicing anyone that is coming back to Holyoke. So you could be coming back from active duty, you could be coming back from a mental health facility, you could be coming from a substance abuse facility, whichever one. The idea is to provide mentorship, to provide stability, workforce development, financial literacy, and the ability for people to 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 progress and move forward after their release from wherever it is that they're coming from. Um, ideally, within a community like Holyoke, um, we don't have the funds to support such a thing. But with some of the opioid funding that's coming down, that I do know could possibly be used in that direction. Um, and it, they could only, technically, if we only funded one possible position that could manage a lot of the collaborations, a lot of this can happen through the collaborations and the partnerships and the grants that the police and a lot of the other nonprofits within the city are already receiving to service the, the, these, this demographic. Um, so again, uh, this meeting was a great meeting, very informative. It was set up in a way where, um, you learned a lot about, um, public safety within the community of Holyoke and somewhat of Hamden County. Um, appreciate the time and thank you, guys. If there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Motion has been complied with?
Second. Aye. Next? Get out of here.
I heard that.
Yeah, heard what? We're ready.
Get out of here.
Don't.
We're not going nowhere. We'll be out here by 12, don't worry.
No comment.
Yeah, that works.
All right.
I, I heard you.
I can't hear.
There we go.
There you go.
All right, from Counsel Bacon. Men are chartering ordinance to change from an elected mayor. Uh, the city manager, chief of ministry, appointed by the council, so charter.
Chartering rules, please?
All those in favor?
Aye.
From Counsel Anderson Burgos, order that Dylan Ave be added to the list of streets that need to be repaved. Motion to be received adopt, send to DPW.
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 29 from Counsel Gibner, order that streetlight be installed on the north side of Locust at the intersection of Appleton. Motion to be received adopt, send to HG&E, and I think we have to a copy to the mayor.
Mayor.
Copy to DPW for, if you have to add a poll.
All right, and DPW, all those in favor?
It's a point of order, Mr. Mayor, obviously, Mr. Mayor. You were the mayor at one point.
Oh, he was, he sure was.
I forgot.
Couple of weeks.
You were the mayor. Just, just as a, a, a point of order, uh, it's all well and good to file an order, with nothing wrong with that, but you can contact HG&E directly, and they'll address it directly. So I don't know anything about, because I've done it at least a half dozen times, so, just a thought. Thank you.
So that one, receive adopt, send to the areas we said. Uh, 30 from myself, order that all Orange charter references to a Assistant Superintendent Public Health be updated, so this has to go to ordinance.
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 30. Uh, 31 from Counsel McGivern.
Finance.
This is the four ninety-nine hundred and twenty dollars note, Brian Grant, so that's the finance.
Suspend the rules to take thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four as a package and refer to Committee on Finance.
Thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-four as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
So as I said, thirty-one, thirty-two is five thousand election officers to equipment rentals. Thirty-four is thirty thousand capital stabilization to War Memorial. All those to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thirty-three, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars eighty-three cents from Sergeant Patrol to injured on duty.
Received, passed first reading to adopt.
Motion receive, adopt, pass first reading. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Wow.
Pass the first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. The purpose of this is an accounting move. The public safety, whether it be police or private business police, who are injured on duty, are still going to be paid, but we just want to take it out of the payroll line item and put it into an injured on duty for purposes of keeping track of it.
All right, so pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Pass the second reading. Clerk Coleridge wrote, yes, you're voting for injured on duty.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Ruffier Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Boello?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Levin Yase unanimous vote.
Inter vote, you approve that. Thirty-six from Counsel Mercer Rumbaletti, or that the position of crime analyst be created. So ordinance?
Can I be added as a cosponsor? Would that be okay? Thank you, Tessa.
Sure.
To ordinance?
Yeah, just...
Your kid?
Sure. Absolutely, bud.
All right, and Counsel Jaden Rivera, all those in favor? All opposed. Thirty-seven from Counsel Mercer Rumbaletti, which would be order to declare parcel surplus. This would be DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A. Mary did A. B. from Counsel Rivera, or that the City Council review noise ordinance and require decibel meters readings before ticketing. So this go to ordinance?
Ordinance, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
C from Counsel Rivera, or that the City Forester cut back and trim Main Street beginning at Cabot. So receive, adopt, send to the Forester.
Yeah, I would say that. And, and like, I've had the conversation before with DPW and possibly the Foresters. Just, I continue to receive complaints from the businesses on Main Streets, that eventually they're gonna cut the branches themselves, because they're, they're protruding into the roofs that they just put up, some of them. And some of them put windows up, and it might damage some of their stuff, but if you cut a tree, I told them, if you cut the tree yourself, they can find you, bro. So you gotta, we're gonna have to find the happy medium somewhere. So that's the only reason why I filed it as a communication. We don't have to actually, just send it to DPW.
That's happening in a number of spots in South Holyoke, too.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. So wait, just so we get it correct, since it's a late file. Motion to suspend, motions take final action on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So motions, receive, adopt, send to the Forester. Counsel Jordane?
I was just gonna briefly, I'm glad he filed this, but on top of it, there's a number that I've also filed for South Holyoke, where you literally have the branches going up onto the building, our trees, and it's like, it's blocking people's windows and the, and multiple apartment blocks. You know, you go around Hamilton Street, South Summer Streets, you know, South Bridge Street, all, it's, it's, we've got some, we gotta get on top of that. It's not right. And it needs to be fixed.
Counsel Anderson Burgos?
No, I was just gonna say that if the, if the trees, not that people who live in buildings have the equipment, but if, if the tree, if the branches are reaching your window, you can actually cut them if they're coming over onto your property. That's not, you don't get fined for that. Just wanted to point that out to Counsel Rivera.
So, so, so for a frame of reference, yes, if that was your house, and your neighbor, your budding neighbor's house tree branch grew into your neighbor thing, right?
Right.
But if it's a city tree growing into your house, I, I, I'm not sure that that's clear.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
Hold on. Well, how about we just send it to forestry and they'll...
Send it, yeah.
Take care of it.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's not debate it.
Not debatable. D from Counsel Rivera, or at the city, work on contracting with consultants that order move forward with vital traffic orders as well as being held up due to absence of a city engineer. What do you want to do with this one?
Did I write it that bad? Wow.
No, no, I'm trying to...
Oh, I was gonna say.
It is almost eleven o'clock.
It's just that we've already, I thought we had already, I thought we already did this, because we hired, we have an engineer consulting service that we're paying for right now in the absence of this.
Not necessarily. So to my understanding, they're only doing day-to-day. They're not necessarily doing like a lot, a lot of our larger traffic orders. So like the Kelly School situation that I got going on, that's put on hold because of, we don't have an actual city engineer that's sitting in that position. So for me, it's like, if, the city should not be put on hold because we don't have a city engineer. That's a vital position.
We need to get more hours then with the person.
Right. Either we get more hours, or we figure something out with regards to how do we move these orders forward, because I have a couple orders that are stuck.
So what do you want, want to receive?
Motion to take final action.
Motion be suspended, or take up final action on D.
That's exactly what I want.
All opposed? Motion is receive, adopt, and send to DPW?
And the mayor.
And the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That one's done. E from Counsel Rivera, or the Police Department present an update on the goals or steps taken to address some of the concerns, MRI audit.
They can go to public safety.
Go to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
F from Counsel Tomlin, or that Sean Sheedy from DPW review maintenance issues needed at the senior center.
To public safety? Copy to DPW?
To public safety, copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Motion to adjourn. Don't debate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You stand adjourned.